Okay, good morning. It is 9:00 AM and we will call this February 22nd, Board of Supervisors Meeting to Order. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Going to begin with a report out from our February 7th closed session meeting. Item 5.1, Government Code Section 54954.5C, Conference with Legal Counsel, Initiation of Litigation, Number of Cases, One. That item was pulled and no discussion took place. Item 5.2, there were two cases. One, Carlson et al versus County of Trinity et al. Trinity County Superior Court Case Number 20CV136. In that discussion, direction was given to counsel. And then Case Two was Bauer. That was a misprint in the original. It is not Brower. That is Bauer et al versus County of Trinity et al. Trinity County Superior Court Case. Ashley, do you have the correction for that one available? Okay, we will give you that corrected case number. There was also a mistake there on the original. That conversation ended also in direction being given to counsel. Item 5.3, Government Code Section 549.4.5B, Conference with Real Property Negotiators, Address 101 Memorial Drive, Weaverville, California. Agency negotiators Elizabeth Hamilton and Margaret Long, negotiating party to be determined under negotiation price in terms of sale and payment. The direction given to staff was to further gather previously requested information and bring the item into open session for public comment and board discussion. Interim CIO Hamilton has had similar experience in the process of either repurposing existing structures or pursuing additionally needed structures, and so her guidance moving forward in this will be invaluable. On February 15th, we had a special closed session meeting. Item 1.1, Government Code Section 54954.5C, Conference with Legal Counsel, Initiation of Litigation, Number of Cases, One. And in that discussion, direction was given to counsel. We will now move into presentations and with our Forest Service representatives that are here today, their entire Forest Leadership Team is in town. And so I'm going to change the order of our presentations to allow them to present to us first and then they can move on with their day. So I will open the floor for Supervisor Berkey or our District Ranger Hutter Jones, Rachel.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairperson Cox and members of the board. Do we have a PowerPoint presentation that we provided to display here? Carrie Otto, O T T O.
Was it sent to clerk of the board or clerk of the board?
Great. And while she's pulling that up, Rachel Berkey, Forest Supervisor for the Shasta Trinity National Forest. Nice to see you. Many of you we've spoken with, but some new faces, so good to be here. Thank you for having us on the agenda. What I would like to chat with you guys about this morning is there were, either myself or my staff have had conversations about a initiative that the Forest Service rolled out last year called the Wildfire Crisis Strategy. And the the funding that came with it, that rolled out to various national forests throughout last year and was announced this year that the Shasta Trinity National Forest will be the recipient of some of that funding moving forward. And I know that we've had conversations with you all about this, but I did want to give you a little bit more detail about the initiative and about the landscapes that we're going to be focusing on and about the funding. So that's why I'm here this morning. If you could roll forward to the next slide, that would be great. So what what we'll be talking about today is our increased efforts to partner to reduce risk around communities and promote our healthy forests. And what's nice about that is we actually have some support all the way up the chain of command in in the Forest Service as well as some funding to move forward with some of these pieces. This is a joint effort between the Shasta Trinity National Forest and the Six Rivers National Forest. And the Six Rivers National Forest Supervisor sends his regrets for not being able to be here today. But we are working hand in hand across forest boundaries with this effort. Next slide. So as you may be aware, last January, so January of 2022, the the Forest Service rolled out a 10-year wildfire crisis strategy. And this was a national strategy to reduce wildfire risk across the Forest Service footprints nationwide. And what this strategy laid out was a plan to treat an additional 20 million acres of National Forest System lands across the country in the next 10 years and beyond, as well as an additional 30 million acres of state and private lands across the country. And with this strategic look, oh, that's okay. With this strategic look came expectations around forests utilizing this strategy to ensure that we actually increase the scope of the treatments that we're making on the ground as well as focusing those treatments in the areas where we're going to be the most effective. So there were there were scientific modeling efforts that occurred prior to the rollout of this strategy. And what happened was the the Forest Service identified high-risk fire sheds that allowed us to kind of focus our energy and the limited resources that we have in areas where we're going to have the most impact on two things. One is the resilience of the forest resource itself. How how well does it withstand the introduction of fire? How well do the habitats grow back? And how well are we protecting the actual resource itself as well as reducing the risk to surrounding communities? And how well is that going to be? How how well is the forest going to be able to maintain these fire introductions and not have them flow into surrounding communities? So we're looking at what what things we can do on the ground to make an impact on those two things. Another piece that came with our wildfire crisis strategy is Congress passed a couple of very important pieces of legislation, the bipartisan infrastructure law and the inflation reduction law. And what they did is they provided what we're calling a down payment on the resources that this agency needs to start to turn the ship with regard to the landscape treatments that we are developing. Next slide. So this wildfire crisis strategy kind of focus is on four different areas. It's on proactive treatments, again, to support risk reduction and to support a healthy and resilient landscape. It's identifying the right location and tools for these treatments. It's developing needed workforce capacity. The beautiful thing about having Congress kind of lockstep with the administration in this is that now we have the money to actually start doing some of that workforce development. And then the next piece, and one of the most important pieces, is partnerships and collaborations. Because if we are not staffed up to do the work on the ground ourselves, it is only through partnerships and collaborations that we can get that work done. Next slide, please. Okay, so to give you a feel or an overview of Trinity County's fire sheds, this slide will show these colorful splotches in the midst of the county footprint here. Are the high-risk fire sheds that we've identified? And their ranking on this slide lets you know that we've got several very highly ranked in the country. These are not, you know, the top 100 fire sheds are some of the highest-risk fire areas in the whole nation, and we happen to be home to four of them. Next slide. And so as a result of, well, let me not jump ahead. So as a result of receiving the BIL and IRL funding, what the Forest Service did at the beginning of last year is identify 10 landscapes that they wanted to focus on for the year to provide the money for restoration and fire resilience activities and projects. And so last year, they identified two in California, one on the Stanislaw National Forest and one on the Tahoe National Forest. And that is where the money got funneled. So when the IRL BIL money came down, it was not distributed evenly across the United States or across the forests. What happened was the Washington Office of the Forest Service and the Secretary of the Department of Agriculture identified areas where they wanted really some 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 focused effort. And again, based on what is going to have the most bang for the buck, what are going to be the areas that where we could really make an impact with treatments on the ground? So that was 2022. Last month in 2023, the Secretary of Agriculture announced that that the administration was going to be funneling money to 11 additional landscapes across the country. So that means nationwide now, they've got 21. When we say landscapes, they're they're basically footprints within different forests that they believe we will have the most impact on when we start to do some fuels treatments at the scale that is necessary to make a difference on the landscape. Next slide. So seeing this coming down the pike and knowing that we were home to several of the high-risk fire sheds that our agency already identified, the Six Rivers and Shasta Trinity National Forest put forth a proposal to the Washington Office to say, hey, look, we have a fantastic footprint where we could make a real difference on the ground, where we could actually move this needle if you decided to designate us as one of your priority landscapes. And we were delighted to learn and as the Secretary announced last month, that the Trinity County Fire Resilient Rural Community Projects was chosen as one of the 21 priority landscapes across the country. So our landscape area covers nearly 700,000 acres managed by the National Forest System. And what we did is we utilized the base map for our 2022 Joint Chiefs Proposal, which was a proposal that the forest had put forth for a much more modest sum of funding several years ago and received some funding for that. So we are we are building on the good work that we already did through some additional funding initiatives that we had moved forward with. We have the potential to receive somewhere between $10 and $20 million across this landscape in 2023, and in future years, there is more money yet to come. The key here is that we need to show that we can implement the projects that we've been talking about, that we can treat acres, that we can increase forest resiliency, that we can provide increased, or rather, increased risk reduction to our surrounding communities. And the Washington Office is watching, the Secretary of Agriculture is watching, the nation is watching, to see what these priority landscapes are able to do with the funding that they have. And if we are able to be successful, and I have every confidence that we will be, we will get more more funding in the additional out years. So here are some of the activities that we are looking at right now in 2023. It's going to be important that we roll out strong with our funding and our initiative in our Trinity landscape footprint. We are, as you guys well know, looking at a good neighbor authority agreement with the county. And we do have a funding line items in our proposal to ensure that that agreement can get funded as soon as we have that signed and executed. Petty John's Fire Management Fuel Reduction Activity is one project that we're going to be looking at, hopefully completing in this upcoming fiscal year. The Weaverville Community Forest, both Phases One and Two, that we've been working on for quite a while, will also be the recipient of some of these funds. We have pre-commercial thinning planned in the Indian Valley area. And we are planning and surveys in several additional projects, our Big Ranch Fire Resilience Project. We're going to be looking at our Wildland Urban Interface Hazard Reduction Projects. And in out years, we're going to have a minute, so let me back up. This year, we want to look at the projects we already have on the books and get those done with the money and resources that we have. In out years, we are going to have opportunity like we have never had before to actually start planning at a bigger scale than perhaps any of us are used to seeing on the landscapes. One of the thoughts that we have in out-year planning with this money and these resources is a forest-wide prescribed burning programmatic environmental assessment. And so the hope is that we can start doing some of the environmental analyses at a larger scale as well. And so when we are ready to then implement projects within the footprint, we have the environmental analyses squared away, and we know that we're on the right path for that particular implementation. Next slide. In addition to the Trinity community protection landscape that we've received funding for, we have also received a little bit of funding for the Klamath River Basin landscape. So both the Six Rivers National Forest and the Shasta Trinity National Forest are the recipient of two priority landscapes from the Washington Office and the Secretary of Agriculture's designation. This outline is the Klamath River Basin landscape. This landscape is very, very large, 10 million acres worth in fact, and encompasses not only five different national forests, but two different regions of the national forest. So we sit here in the Pacific Southwest region, and we also nibble up into the region to our north as well with this landscape. So this is a much larger look at an entire watershed. And the fun thing about being a part, we are a small part, but a part of this landscape is again, in out years, when we have a chance to do a little look and some planning, we may be able to make an even larger impact in this watershed because we actually have this boundary that allows us to kind of zoom out and and attack this problem at a scale that may make a difference. So we have some funding coming in from this Klamath River Basin landscape. The lead forest for this landscape is is the forest to our north, the Klamath National Forest. The Shasta Trinity and the Six Rivers will also be recipients of those funds as well. Okay, quick overview of some agreements that we are looking at with our local partners for 2023 and what they will be doing to help us here. But my overall point with this slide and what I want to make sure that I that I emphasize to you this morning is the importance of having our local partners involved in this effort with us. This is one of our highest priorities when we are looking at how we are going to move forward with some of these projects and also some of the larger strategic look at what we're going to be doing next on these landscapes. As I mentioned before, without our partners, and in particular, our local partners, none of this would get done. We would not be successful. Full stop. And so we are hoping to be able to really grow these relationships and keep as much of this money that we have to spend on these lands inside the county locally and 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 allow it to not only help to increase the resilience of the of the resource, to help increase or reduce wildfire risk in our communities, but to also help with the economic health of the county. The watershed research and training center and the Resource Conservation District have been just pivotal partners for us, and we are very excited to have them onboard with us in this initiative as well. And I I believe that in in future years, we are going to be able to increase that participation and ensure that we have folks onboard as early as possible in the process. Next slide. So the the Washington Office is not letting us go all by ourselves and saying, good luck. As I mentioned, the entire chain of command, all the way up through the Secretary of Agriculture, are onboard to try to make these 21 landscapes successful in everything that they are doing. Several of the things that they are looking at is how can we do a little more streamlining? Our our handbook and manual direction, our policies that that the Forest Service has developed over the years may contain some things that are unnecessary, some things that are outdated, some activities that really don't actually benefit the land or the communities anymore. They are looking at all of that. They are looking to see what pieces can they help to streamline for us so that we can be more nimble on the ground. One of those pieces is some tools that they're looking at using in the in the environmental analysis arena. There are some emergency procedures that are being defined to assist us in addressing our critical work on this ground. The wildfire crisis strategy calls this an emergency. We here in Trinity County know very well that this is an emergency. And it's it's been heartening to see that the leadership all throughout this organization also feels similarly and is looking to see what resources we might bring to bear, given the emergency of this issue. Next slide. Quick side diversion here, not to forget, we do have money from a a bill that was passed last year, a post-fire disaster supplemental bill, and we will still be receiving that money to support post-fire recovery efforts, including reforestation in our forest fire footprints. So we have we have resources and funding for our August complex, our Red Salmon Complex, our McFarland Monument and River Fire complexes as well. Those efforts are going to be moving forward apace. We can walk and chew gum at the same time. And so the the Trinity landscape efforts and our post-fire recovery efforts, you will see move forward in this fiscal year. Okay, and I think I've 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 hit this already, but the the success that we have in this endeavor in the next many years, this is not a one and done. This with any luck, this will be an out-year funding collaboration opportunity as well. And so we are hopeful that by by partnering with all of the stakeholders that we have in in the county and outside of the Forest Service, that we will be able to really make a big difference in this in this effort moving forward. And again, we will only receive the funding in out years if we can show that we took action in the current year. So I am hopeful at how the county has already sort of risen up to meet the challenge with us. We've already been having fantastic conversations with our partners and our collaborators, and we look forward to more of that moving forward. One other additional piece of this, before I take any questions that you might have, is in terms of just logistically managing this, what what has what what has become its own sort of entity within the Forest Service footprint is we we are developing a team of both Forest Service folks and other folks that we are trying to hire to kind of lead the effort in making certain that all of the landscape projects get the attention that they deserve and get the funding funneled and the agreements get written and all of these pieces get kind of placed, put into place. We are not being asked to shift all of our forest resources to the landscape footprint to the detriment of the other forest activities. In fact, quite the opposite. We have to keep the regular forest activities moving along in the rest of the forest footprint. And that is why the 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 leadership of this organization is willing to give us additional resources and additional money to try to expand that capacity as well as expanding it through partnerships and support of those partnerships. So we will have a team that's sort of overseeing the administration of all of the projects on our landscape, and it will be integrated with both the Six Rivers and the Shasta Trinity National Forest Leadership as well. So we're excited about being able to really move out strongly with this effort. So I think that's that's a little more of the overview that I wanted to give you, but I'm more than happy to answer questions, and I've got a fantastic representation of the highest level of our forest leaders in the back of the room here as well to to talk to you about pieces if you have curiosities.
Nice. Rachel, thank you for being here. I wanted to say initially, thank you for the effort of yourself and others to even do all that it required for you to elevate this to the level that it was recognized and then awarded this attention and the funding that comes with it. You know, I I feel like two years ago when we met, I spoke and you heard. And I have seen you do nothing but respond. And I'm not sure how to communicate that to the public, the hours of conversation that you and I have spent together, and my respect and my gratitude. So thank you for that. I have one quick question. This additional oversight that's going to happen, those dollars don't come out of the almost 16 million allotted. This is a separate funding or it's a piece of it that's designated for the oversight?
The six, what what 16 million are you talking?
In other words, it's my understanding that just under 16 million was given for this first year for implementation of work. And then we're talking about some additional oversight that's going to be implemented to make sure that plans go forward as they are designed and hoped. I'm wondering if the funding for that comes out of that almost 16 million or if that's additional separate funding?
Oh, well, so we have we're we have money that's going to be coming in from all different sources in the coming years in this regard, the IRL, the BIL, the disaster supplemental. And so we are able to pull from all of those pieces to staff up these teams that are going to be working on the on the landscapes. So yes, the 16 billion or 16 million initial allotment for this year, it depends on when we're able to actually get new staff onboard, to be honest with you Supervisor Cox. I would be surprised if we're able to hire that quickly. It may come out of future year funding. We can ask for more funding at any time that we need it. So it really is, the focus is not on making certain that you have minimized your spending for minimal footprint. It's it's if you can get this work done and show us you can do it, we will give you the funds to do the work.
Okay, nice. Nice. Thank you for that.
Yeah, it's a nice message.
Questions with supervisors?
One for me is if people want to learn more about these programs and where they're going on and when and all that, where would they look? Where would they turn to get that information to stay up to speed with all the great things you'll be doing?
Yes, so the the National Office as well as the Regional Office have rolled out some great, and we can, I'll get you these links, but we've rolled out some great websites that lay out all of the landscape efforts and kind of what the what the projects are and where they're going to be implemented and what the thinking is around, and even the funding. We've got some fantastic brochures that have been displayed as well. And our Public Affairs Shop will be posting on social media the activities that we are engaging in too, so we can get you those websites as well.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
And I'd just like to add, my exposure to a lot of this is newer than other folks here. But between volunteer fire department, Weaverville Community Forest meetings, Fire Safety Council meetings, things like that, all I've been hearing is how improved the working relationship is between any of these kinds of organizations and Forest Service in these last couple of years. And this to me is just taking it up a whole nother notch. So we feel, I feel, very seen and heard, even though we haven't had the conversations that we collectively. And I really appreciate it. It's it's nice to see the the improvement.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Supervisor Frazier?
Well, I don't know. Um, I do have some questions. One of the first questions I would have is in your presentation, it showed the, the, all the plans for your projects. And one thing I found glaringly missing was there's a lot of fuels, there's a lot of fire, and there's not a lot of harvest. It's pre-commercial thin. And my question would be, has anybody considered actually cutting timber logging as a part of the forest resilience? The other questions I would have is what is going to, and I'm sorry, because I haven't had very good luck in my entire life history with Forest Service. So I'm not personally attacking you, but what is the chance that this actually becomes something that is permanent? I know just in my lifetime, and I'm not that old, we've had so many changes in forest management where there was coloring of the black oaks so we could grow timber. Then there was, we're going to decommission all the roads because we want roadless areas. Well, that is a major impediment to fire suppression. When all the forest roads have been decommissioned. Now, then we went to the oak woodland restoration, which was the opposite of when they were killing the oaks. So these are the kind of questions that I have, and I haven't had a lot of dealings. Shasta Trinity, most of my district is Six Rivers National Forest. But those kind of questions are the things that people see. It's like, yeah, this sounds really good on paper. But at some point, the money that gets put into this, what's the outcome for Trinity County? I mean, it would be nice if we had a sawmill in Hayfork again. It would be nice if Weaverville Sawmill was working three shifts and that there was actually some, some timber money coming in. So that's one of the things that I would like to see pushed is not just a burning and, and pre-commercial thinning, but let's harvest some timber and increase the usefulness of our forest besides just, um, there's more to our forest than to have a place to go look. It needs to be used. And that's my concern with all these things moving forward.
I, I could not agree with you more Supervisor Fraser. All, all tools are on the table with us. All activities are on the table with this. We can't do it focused on one thing. We can't do it focused on just burning or just pre-commercial thinning. We are absolutely looking at timber harvest as a critical piece of the whole puzzle moving forward with this. No doubt, no doubt. We would be silly, silly to be taking, tying our own hands with what we can do. The forest needs all of these pieces. All of these pieces of treatment are really important. Um, and so, so all the, including the timber, the timber treatments as well, um, all of that is going to be looked at for out-year planning. If we didn't have anything right now in this fiscal 23 piece planned, that certainly doesn't mean that we haven't been looking at and will continue to look at where we can provide merchantable timber off the forest. Cause we do have a, a multi-use, sustainable use mandate, and we have to operate our forest consistent with that mandate. That's not a choice that we're allowed to make. Um, and then in terms of your out, out-year, how permanent is this? We would all love to know that. I, I do want to make certain that we seize this opportunity in the coming, you know, immediate years and immediate out-years to the greatest extent possible. The wildfire crisis strategy has a 10-year look with the hope that it's going to be pushed out further. The funding that came down from these statutes, these unique funding sources are not tied to fiscal years, and so we do have the ability to access them in out-years. Will they run out? Absolutely. Will we need another influx? Absolutely. To maintain what we have started and to actually, as we like to say, move the needle on the landscape. This cannot be a one-year, five-year, or even 10-year effort. It has to be a consistent effort where this, where this agency is funded over the long term at a level that allows it to actually do the work it needs to do. I wish I had a crystal ball and I wish I could say, yes, that's going to happen in, in out-years. I don't know the answer to that. What I do know is we have an opportunity now and we are not going to let that go.
And then I do have one more question. You mentioned, uh, NEPA and the, and streamlining. And in the post-fire recovery, is, is that going to be something that you can streamline so that we don't have? I mean, I live in the August complex footprint and the projects still haven't really started. So we're almost, it'll be three years before anything starts, and that's too long. So i- is that something that's actually going to start to pick up where you can streamline NEPA? Where if we have a fire, you can start as soon as the fire's out to do the recovery?
So couple of impediments that we are hoping are going to lighten as a result of this initiative. The NEPA streamlining is relatively limited to the footprints of our high-risk fire sheds. So depending on where the fire is, if it happens to be in that footprint and we are still under the, um, the emergency authorities, then the answer is yes, we will have some additional flexibilities to roll out more quickly in the post-fire world. But another piece of this that, that we are hoping to move forward with is the bigger picture NEPA and other environmental analyses documents, the programmatic documents that we will now have the funding to look at forest-wide. And so if we can get some of these forest-wide programmatic documents, you may be familiar with the Six Rivers has a prescribed burn programmatic document that they are almost finalizing right now, um, or almost ready to finalize. So something akin to that, but for other types of treatments across the landscape. If we can get that into place now, then we will have that coverage over those areas into the future and be able to act more quickly and more nimbly once a fire or another emergency happens. And we want to go ahead and implement because often what holds us up is the planning phase prior to being able to implement. So if we can either A, take advantage of the streamlining, like you're mentioning, across the high-risk fire sheds that we have, or B, get some pre-planning done, get some programmatic, um, instruments in place that allow us the flexibility to move out more quickly. Those will be wins in both categories.
Okay. Supervisor Gogan?
I have a couple of questions or one question since I see this most of the fire danger is in District Three Hayfork, Bigum, Burton Ranch. From my understanding is we still have part-time Rangers in Hayfork, Platinah, I think Big Bar. Are we going to get a full-time Ranger in those posts? Since obviously we fall into the largest bracket of this fire danger and we, we're still running on half-time or part-time Fire Rangers there. Is there a chance that we will get a full-time Ranger in Hayfork, Platinah, Big Bar, and I think even Weaverville?
Thank you for your question Supervisor. Um, so you have a full-time Ranger in, in Tara Jones. She is, she is absolutely authorized to cover the entire west side of the Shasta Trinity, and that would include all of Trinity County. Ranger Jones will have a full-time Deputy District Ranger once that gets staffed up, um, who will also be empowered to cover the entire west side of the Shasta Trinity and in Trinity County. We intend to, uh, maintain presences at each of the different district offices that we have in the county. There is no plans around reorganizing, um, the way the offices are structured. And we are going to continue to attempt to staff up the South Fork Management Unit, separate from the Trinity River Management Unit that we have. We have two administratively distinct units on this side of the forest. Our hiring efforts for the South Fork Management Unit have been challenging. We do have funding and energy focused there to try to get a fully-staffed office happening in the South Fork Management Unit. And we will continue to, um, interview folks and fill vacancies until we have two fully-staffed management units within this county and on this side of the forest. While we are in the effort of trying to staff up two fully-staffed units, having a combined leadership structure is the most efficient and effective way to manage the folks. We have a lot of folks in Weaverville that travel to Hayfork and that, that work in the Hayfork offices. And we share a lot of staff right now still across these two management units. While we are sharing staff, we need to have a unified leadership structure to ensure that our staff is deployed as effectively as possible and that we don't have competing priorities, sort of pooling them in a multitude of directions. So in this moment, no, we are not going to be staffing a separate leadership structure in the Hayfork, um, on the South Fork Management Unit in the Hayfork Office. We are going to retain our combined leadership structure for the time being until we have our both units fully staffed. I have good confidence. We've been making progress. And Supervisor, I'm rather Ranger Jones can give you a little bit more detail if you'd like on the different positions we have been able to fill. It is slow-going. Um, and so we need to be, continue to be patient with getting those offices staffed up and making certain that those employees have a unified voice across the county to ensure that we are not actually missing our operational tempo in either place.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Carpenter?
Hello. Thank you for your presentation. It was very informative. I grew up, um, Forest Service Green. One of the greatest moments in the, my day was when my dad pulled down the back driveway of our house in his uniform and his green truck, and he jumped out with his white boots on and picked me up and held me in one arm. And I thought I was on top of the mountain. It wasn't until I was an adult that I realized my dad was only 5'9". And that, that height I was experiencing was mostly, um, just his presence. So, um, thank you, uh, for your guys' service to our forest. One of the things I'm hopeful kind of, um, uh, is along with Supervisor Fraser is trying to get some of those trees that have been burnt off of that landscape when they're still merchantable. I know that there's always been a struggle with that, um, with NEPA and then just planning and activities. So that's something I, I'm looking forward to seeing happen more rapidly. Cause we can, we can skin some money off of those, even though they've been kind of heated up a little bit. They're not going to survive, you know? So we might as well get something out of them. So I'm looking forward to, to seeing that come along. Also, I am very, very grateful to see that the Burton Ranch community is going to be served in some of this new funding. The Forest Service Road Service is the High and Palm community as well. Many people pass over that to get to Highway 299 during good weather seasons. And that's their direct route out, kind of to either go, to go to the coast most of the time. So I'm really looking forward to those roads, um, being, you know, just returned to really being viable and, and able for us to use them. During the 64 flood, those were the, some of the only, uh, ways that people survived that, that season. And for us to think that that's not coming again is, is foolishness on our behalf. So making sure that those high ridge roads are, are really passable is, is really important. And so I hope that, um, the fuels reduction happens along the sides of those. And then we can also maybe surface them so that we can have emergency equipment and vehicles passing, um, with good thoroughfare. But thank you for your time. If you ever need anything down in my district, on District Four and High and Palm Burton Ranch, Shawyer area, let me know. I'd be more than happy to, to, um, walk beside you and try to get as much of this work done as possible.
Wonderful. Thank you Supervisor.
One more questions before I, I let you go if I could. When you were talking about this combined leadership structure and the fact that we do have right now a Deputy District Ranger serving full-time under Ranger Jones, who is also a Deputy Ranger Jones, no relation.
Oh, correct?
Oh. So that's a detailed position at this time, right? So my question is, I know you're wanting to staff that full-time. Is there going to be a gap between his detail and when a new person comes on? I mean, obviously that would be a hopeful no, but do you have any foresight?
We, so we always want to keep that position fully staffed. So thus far, it's been with details. We are rolling forward with a permanent vacancy announcement on that. Those things take a hot minute in the federal government. So I do expect that we will have another detailer filling the, the in-between time before we're able to actually bring on our permanent.
And those details are typically how many months?
Four.
Okay. And then, um, the other thing, and this is a little bit out there, maybe we discuss this a little bit later, but it occurs to me. Because we have had our Superintendent of Schools in Washington DC advocating for our Secure Rule Schools funding, that payment in lieu of taxes that we used to receive, which was funded off of, uh, timber sales. And, and so in, in these questions about, hey, can we really do some significant logging as a, as an important tool in the toolbox? Is there a connection here? Can we see some, some dollars flowing yet again? So that when we begin to advocate for what we also need for our roads in addition to our schools, do we see those dollars there or do we see those dollars as with our Good Neighbor Authority, refueling the money that gets, um, initially, uh, placed into that agreement? Do you have a, a sense as to what might be reasonable?
If, so it depends on what happens with the Secure Rule Schools Act effort. But there is no question that, you know, once we get more, the more timber sales that we were able to roll out, that's going to be beneficial from the Secure Rule Schools Act side of things, depending on how that plays out. And we don't have so much control over that from this side, but it would only inure to our benefit to, to roll forward with the timber operations. The, the Good Neighbor Authority, however, you've hit the nail on the head. That's going to be a fantastic way for the Forest Service to funnel some money back to the county for projects that have a nexus to National Forest System land, many of which that we've spoken about do. And so we are able to actually have kind of a much more direct impact with our funding, you know, kind of spread about the county activities in that realm. The Secure Rule Schools Act piece of it is a little bit too hazy at this point for us to know kind of, okay, how could we position ourselves here to catch that money or maximize that money to the greatest extent possible? I don't, I don't even know what the next iteration is going to, what is, what is it even going to tie to in the county? So trying to kind of look at that crystal ball, that might, that, that might be a little bit more hazy for us. But I think a focus on the, on the Good Neighbor Authority and, and that mechanism to, to infuse money for projects that the county is working on is, is a great way to do it.
For sure. And maybe this is a conversation we can kind of start and continue going forward, you and I, as these conversations continue and we see what that looks like.
Perfect. Yeah.
Good, good. Thank you. Really appreciate you being here. Really fun to see all your staff in the room. I do want to give a shout out to Sarah Akeridge because in my board report out, we've got some exciting news about the Minersville Boat Ramp Project. And I just thank you for your work on that. And, um, our goal, my goal, my hope going forward is at the end of this, everybody is going to come out looking great. Everybody is working so hard. There are efforts being made from multiple directions towards something we all see as being so important. And, um, so thank you. And Ranger Jones, I just appreciate your ongoing work. She is tireless and, um, your efforts are, as she often says, not lost on us. We see them. And, um, all of her work in the collaborative meeting last Friday, which I'll share more about and, um, her, it, it's amazing to me watching, uh, as you did spread this leadership, you know, her oversight over a broader spectrum of leadership. I, I was sweating a little bit and thought she'll drop. How can one person uphold all of this? And, um, she's amazing. She is not dropping. She just moves forward with such strength and diligence. So thank you for that. And best of luck to you as you move forward in your endeavors today with your team here and all of the projects that are ahead of you. So, um, a good and productive day to you.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. All right. We will now circle back to our item 1.1. Our, excuse me, sites reservoir project. I had shared at our January 18th meeting that I had met Thad Betner, who is the General Manager of Galen Calus Irrigation District when Supervisor Lutwiler and I were at the Economic Forecasting Conference last month and had asked that he would come and give a presentation. The problem is the exchange of information only went one direction. And I thought, well, am I going to just sit and hope that, uh, he is able to give me a call and make this happen? And then I recalled, I had met Jerry Brown at, uh, the RCRC meeting when he did a wonderful presentation in December when, uh, former Supervisor Brown, uh, took me under his umbrella and to give me wonderful introductions to the RCRC. took me under his umbrella and to give me wonderful introductions to the RCRC staff and the support that is there. So we have with us today, Jerry Brown. He is, uh, owns a waterology consulting business of his own, but he is the principal consultant and CEO of the Sites Reservoir Project. And he has traveled to be here with us in person today. I'm really grateful to you for your energies, your efforts. And it's exciting what we're going to be able to understand about this project today with your guidance. So thank you and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, uh, staff and members of the public. I'm pleased to be here today to provide you with an update on the Sites Reservoir Project. Um, it's been about three years, I think, since, uh, someone from the project came to the Board of Supervisors and, uh, talked to you about the, the issues and concerns that were expressed, um, through various project elements, uh, at that time. And I'm happy to report over the last three years, we've made some really significant, um, changes to the project. And, uh, in many respects, um, changes that are definitely, uh, highly recognizing of the Trinity River resource that you all manage, um, and are involved with. And it recognizing its importance to the state of California and to this region. Um, but also identifying that, you know, the state is in a situation where we have an urgent and severe need for increased water storage. Uh, water storage that the Sites Reservoir, uh, will provide, uh, for, for the state. And, and so, um, I want to report those changes to you today and to, uh, get any other feedback or any other issues or concerns that you might have. Um, I did have a slide presentation and there are several slides in here, um, that I won't need to go over today. But a few things that I wanted to emphasize for sure. Next slide please. When, when people ask me, what is Sites Reservoir? Uh, I, I, I tend to look at things as, uh, machines. And when asked, what is Sites Reservoir? I say, it's a time machine. Because essentially we're taking the water that we, we receive in abundance in wet periods and saving it for times when we need it severely in the dry times. And that's what Sites Reservoir does in a very simplistic way. Next slide please. Um, who is in charge of the Sites Reservoir Project? Uh, it's not the federal government. It's not the state government. It's a group of local water districts in the Sacramento Valley that are listed here. Um, in 2010, those folks came together and created what's called the Sites Project Authority to be in charge and locally manage and lead this project. Uh, yes, we have federal and state involvement in the project, but the leadership and the ownership and the operation of the project, the responsibility for those things all lie with this, um, local water district. This is not a private reservoir. This is not a private, uh, enterprise. This is a, uh, local government, uh, enterprise, a local government, uh, led, run, uh, facility. Next slide please. We do have statewide participation, uh, in the project. These are water districts that are essentially each investing in the project for the benefit of their ratepayers. They're all public water districts within the state of California. It's a broad statewide participation, which provides us with a diversity in our, and, and involvement from many of the, uh, constituencies across the state. The one thing I wanted to point out here that is different from three years ago when we came to you, we have a waiting list. Uh, we have an oversubscription of potential users and you don't have to look very far to understand where that's coming from. It's coming from a severe need for water, uh, in our state and the development of new water supplies, which Sites Reservoir provides. Next slide please. Um, I pretty much already went over this, but, um, flexibility is what Sites Reservoir is all about. When I talk about a time machine, it's really about creating flexibility for those dry years that we're all recognizing are so critical to not just our farms and families, but also our fish and fowl that, that absolutely need to have water supplies in, in these dry periods. And, and climate change and the effects that, that we're seeing from climate change are having a serious impact on our environment. And I'm happy to report that the Sites Reservoir has a significant component of investment for that purpose. Next slide please. Just wanted to let you know, not, nothing's really changed in terms of where the, uh, west of Maxwell, California off Highway five. It's a beautiful, uh, topography, uh, very uniquely situated for the construction of an off-stream reservoir. Next slide please. Um, there's about a hundred and eighty miles of conveyance. It's part of this project and it's only about twenty miles. It's new. And I, I, I tell people that, that this is not a cost-effective project of all that existing infrastructure wasn't already in place. This is, uh, the major piece of new infrastructure, a four-mile, ten-foot diameter pipe that's going to cross under I-5 at about the Ritchie Brothers Auction Yard and, and, uh, connect the Tama Calusa Canal with the Calusa Basin Drain. That's how we're going to get the water back into the Sacramento River, uh, during these dry times, uh, to convey to, to the, to those that are going to use the water. Next slide. Funding, uh, the funding has been secured over the last three years. Uh, we are largely, uh, fully funded for the project. Um, there are no grants for this project. This is all, uh, user, uh, paid. Um, the state has, uh, made a determination, uh, that they are an investor for public benefits of eight hundred and seventy-five million dollars. That's not a grant. That's actual receipt of assets and can, uh, consideration for the public benefits. The federal government, uh, through the Bureau of Reclamation has, uh, made a determination that it, uh, would like to be an investor at sixteen percent, which is a little over seven hundred million dollars of the project. They have not yet secured all those funds for that share. Uh, and, and actually in order to make that room, we have to adjust the participants' level of, of investment down. So, uh, we're, we're still, that's a little bit in flux, probably at least for the next couple of years till we get a little more, uh, clarity on where the federal government's, uh, money supply is going to, uh, finally land. Uh, largely this is funded by, uh, loans, uh, and bonds that the local agencies are going to commit to repaying. Uh, WIFTIA is an Environmental Protection Agency federal program that is, uh, very, uh, it was competitive and we were selected last year to apply for a $2.2 billion loan, which is three times larger than any loan they, they've issued under that program in the, in the past. And so we're very, uh, privileged and, and working hard to make that, uh, loan secure. Uh, and then we have a USDA loan still that probably was reported to you last time we had that when we were here. And, and then whatever else we need is going to be made up with bonds and cash from participants. Next slide. Just wanted to give you a brief update on where we are with the environmental planning. We're coming to the close of, uh, this environmental review process that started in 2017. Uh, that was the document that you all, uh, uh, had raised some concerns about. You and Humboldt County and other interests in the local region here. Uh, concerns about the potential for Trinity River Resources to be utilized to serve Sites Reservoir. Uh, once we received your, uh, input and considered that, we've made some significant adjustments in the 2021 document that, that identify that that is not the case, that there are no Trinity River resources that are be, going to be brought into the Sites Reservoir. Uh, and so that's what's going to be reflected in the final document that's coming forward in the May, in May of this year. Um, significant for you guys is the water right permit. And that's the one piece that I wanted to give you a quick update on, and I'll get to that, uh, just a few more slides. Um, if you go back to the engineering, yeah, next one. We are, uh, making good progress in the field with some geotechnical evaluations. Uh, we have, uh, boots on the ground and machines and equipment out in the field looking at the various geotechnical under, under the surface, uh, conditions so that we can better, uh, understand and address and, uh, estimate what the project costs are going to look like. Um, right now we're at about a $4 billion, uh, uh, project cost in 2021 dollars. Four point four billion if you go to midpoint of construction. And so by the end of next year, we're looking to be at about twenty, uh, thirty percent design. And that will be, enable us to go forward with construction. Next slide. Uh, real estate is a critical component to the project. Of course, we have fourteen thousand acres in the valley that are going to have to be inundated. And this is going to require, uh, that we, uh, secure those lands for this purpose. And there's about twenty-five landowners plus or minus within the valley itself. And, uh, we're already working cooperatively with, with, uh, those that are willing sellers, uh, which are probably eighty to ninety percent of those folks. And, uh, working with them to get access for these, uh, evaluations that are being undertaken currently. And, and we'll be working with them over the next couple of years to secure those parcels as necessary to make the project happen. Um, we did make a, next slide please. We did make a water right application in May of last year. And, uh, we're in the process of going back and forth with the water board right now. But I think very soon we're going to be, uh, at a point where the application is going to be deemed complete. And that, then, then that will start the hearing process and the further, uh, conduct of the state board's activities to actually make the determination of a water right for the project. Um, very important for you all, uh, in the past has been consideration of the CVP and what's happening with, with, uh, reclamation's management of the CVP because of the connection, uh, that, that occurs with the, the Trinity River system in that regard. Very specifically in our water right application, this is all water that would be put in Sites Reservoir would be new, a new water right. There would be no availability or possibility for us to store CVP or SWP in the wa, in the, in the reservoir as, as it would be permitted today. So there would be no application, uh, there is no application or, or request for a water right to divert or re-divert Trinity River water. Next slide please. This just gives you some facts and figures as it relates to the actual water right parameters. Um, next slide please. There were, uh, in our water right application, we identified some very specific terms to try to address, um, constituents', uh, issues that were raised, um, through the evaluation period. And, uh, I would highlight number five on here regarding the Trinity River, which I wanted to give you specifically what the term is. Next slide. Um, specifically there, there is no, uh, and this, this was provided and brought forward by the authority voluntarily to reassure those that are, uh, concerned about the Trinity River and the effect of Sites Reservoir on the Trinity River to reassure everyone that there is no intention and no commitment and a, and a firm commitment by the Sites Water Authority to, uh, in no way affect or, uh, divert or re-divert any Trinity water into the Sites Reservoir. Next slide please. Um, I'm not going to get into this part too heavily, but it does seem to get a lot of attention. The idea that, uh, you know, is there really water available in the Sacramento River for this, uh, for putting into the Sites Reservoir? Um, I don't think you really have to look too much farther than, uh, last month when, um, we had the nine atmospheric rivers come through our state and, uh, uh, the abundance of water that we were seeing in the Sacramento Valley to understand that there are times and periods when water is available for this purpose. And actually, uh, while I acknowledge and, uh, to some extent, agree with folks that believe that water flowing naturally all the way to the ocean is a useful and beneficial purpose for the environment. We have come to a point in time in our society where we really have to look at hard at trade-offs. And it's my personal assessment, being in the water business for over thirty-five years, that, that that trade, we've come to that point and that trade-off between having that water flow out at, um, abundant times, uh, compared to the saving of that water so that it can be reintroduced in the drier times. We've reached the point where that level of opposite optimization and that flexibility is absolutely necessary for our society. Uh, and so, um, when we look at something like a water availability, we've done extensive, uh, reviews of different, um, ways of analyzing and looking at both today's circumstances and the future circumstances, uh, in terms of our availability of water. Uh, in all cases, next slide please. You can see that, um, there is water available for the Sites Reservoir, uh, as illustrated in this, uh, uh, table. Uh, not in all years, but in many years. And, um, go back one year to, uh, 2021, when we had a very wet December, followed by a very dry January, February, March. Um, that was a very dry year, but there were even a period in December when some of the water could have been diverted into Sites Reservoir if it had been in place. So, um, our average annual, uh, diversions are about three hundred thousand acre feet. So you can see from this table, the third column to the right, that, that, uh, there are times, many times on an average annual basis, when there's three to five times more water available uh, for, for a Sites Reservoir than, than is being, uh, requested. So, um, I'll leave you just with one little point. Uh, during those storms in January, we estimated that we would have been able to divert about two hundred and fifty thousand acre feet into storage, which would be hugely beneficial, uh, for, for our communities. And, uh, that is an amount of water that is less than four percent of the total water that was leaving, uh, uh, the, the rivers into the ocean. And so it gets back to my point about trade-offs and what are we, what are we really sacrificing? If we're, we're taking, uh, less than four percent of that water and, and saving it for all purposes, not just humankind purposes, but also for environmental purposes. That's the trade-off that I think is most important, that, that, that we all need to recognize is important for everyone. Final slide is just the, the schedule. Next slide please. I'll skip that one, just the schedule. We are on a track here to finalize the environmental document at the end of May, or, uh, May. And then, uh, we hope to receive our final water right by the end of next year. That's our trigger, uh, between the critical permits and our water right. That's the trigger for initiating the final design and construction. We hope to be into construction in 2025 and be completed by, uh, the beginning of 2032. So that concludes my report today. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Nice. Thank you. Appreciate that very much. Um, let's start at the opposite end. Supervisor Carpenter Harris, do you have questions?
No, it's very interesting and I will continue to, um, read up about it. I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement that we need to hold water when we can. Um, and I am also in agreement that we have hit a point where we're having, we're going to have to make some serious, as you said, um, you know, trade-offs or, or compromises. Um, and recognizing that we can't live, um, with management of a single issue. We have to, we have to find out ways to, to kind of spread our concerns across the line. We have to eat food. I don't know anyone here who grows all of their own food totally. So, um, that's a, a concern, obviously. And then also just ma, making sure that we protect for us, the fish and the things along the river that are the most important to us here. So thank you for your time and your information.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam.
Supervisor Gogan.
There has been evaluation done of the lack of water getting to the San Francisco Bay. Um, because of fewer four percent or whatever it might be annually. So there have been studies on how that may affect, uh, fish to come into the bay, the saltwater, the salinity, the, the brackish water. Does it, does it change that at all in a detrimental way to any of the fish that need a certain percentage of X type water to stay alive?
In our anal, that is something that we've analyzed, uh, Supervisor Gogan. And, and in our analysis, um, no, it is not something, the, the amount of water that we're talking about for the Sites Reservoir is not something that has a significant effect or material effect on either the fish species or the ability to repel the seawater intrusion. We're talking about situations where outflow in the Delta is generally over, uh, thirty or forty thousand CFS. In this last series of storms, it was a hundred and fifty thousand CFS. And, you know, flooding was occurring in various locations. So, um, it is not a significant or merit material effect on any species or salinity, uh, repulsion.
And somewhere in there, I saw the BOR had a certain percentage of this. Um, what, what are, what are their plans? If this is not a... If this is not a this is a private thing, this is a public, public deal, but obviously I know BOR is not that public and judicious with the water all the time. I did see the Western Water District on there too, so that raises a couple hairs on my back there. Um, so for the, I think it was seven hundred thousand dollars, pretty cheap federally. What, 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 why do they want in?
Uh, it was uh, seven hundred million, sixteen percent of the project. Uh, why do they want in? Um, they're really uh, seeking a couple of different uh, purposes. First is environmental purposes. Um, uh, the site, because of the location of the sites reservoir, it's very complimentary to the operation of Shasta in regard to uh, storing and control, better controlling cold water for salmon, uh, species in the river. And so that is one aspect that they're looking at. The other is uh, supplemental water supply for their contractors. And flexibility that that something like a sites reservoir provides for that purpose. Uh, it, this is an unusual and sometimes seems uncomfortable position for reclamation to be in as an investor in a project as opposed to the in charge lead leadership. Uh, but uh, Senator Feinstein uh, was instrumental in creating what's called the WIN Act in twenty sixteen that that allowed for state, state-led projects, which also means local-led projects to uh, allow for reclamation to be investors in those projects. And she did that essentially to complement the state's Prop One investment that had just passed by the voters in twenty fourteen. Recognizing that the days of the federal government coming in and doing everything and 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 having their way uh, are over and they don't exist any longer and but but that the federal government in its capacity to serve its customers still needs to be able to make investments. And so uh, that is the, that is the mechanism under which we are operating and um, we're one of the first to be venturing into that space. But I can tell you that many of our investors uh, that are, that are part of the sites authority are very, uh, are are reclamation contractors and so they'll feel very empowered by this opportunity to be in charge of the project and to recognize reclamation as an investor and have all the rights and obligations that come with that, risks and rewards as well. Uh, but but not necessarily succumbing to the federal government's uh, demands at all times.
Rosie outlook you have. Um, so it was seven hundred and something.
Yeah.
In total cost for the project was?
Total cost is a, a little over four billion, four point four, if you go to midpoint of construction, four point four billion.
And there's a sixteen percent, is that what you said? Sixteen percent without raise as the total cost goes up or is that?
Yeah, theirs is a function, a percentage of the actual cost. That is the current envisioned.
So there's sixteen percent will continue, say this is a hundred billion, they'll, they'll put in sixteen billion. Is that correct? Is that what?
Yeah.
Is that what I'm getting at?
Yeah.
Personally, how do you feel about that?
Well, I think there's, it's uncertain whether that is going to materialize. So far, they've put in about two hundred million. They've committed two hundred million to the project, not that we've gotten that, but that that's in the bank. And I'm telling uh, all the other investors, you know, we need to see the money. And when it comes two years from now, when we need to sign loan papers for two point nine billion dollars, they all have to commit to that as local water districts. They gotta know reclamation is going to be there with their money. It can't be we promised to pay because you know, we're gonna have a prob- hard, hard time getting our loan if that's the way things are going to be. It's gonna be tough over the next two years with the federal government being in the situation that it is. Um, and what we're hearing and seeing from Washington. Uh, and and we have contingencies if that doesn't materialize, as I said, right now we've got to dial some of the local participation back just to make room for that. I'm very comfortable with where we are right now with the local participation and where if if nothing changed, reclamation would be in about seven percent, which is about four hundred million dollars. And so they've given two hundred million, they've been putting in about a hundred million a year so far, so we've got two more years. Math makes sense, right? Um, so uh, we're, we're in pretty good shape and we'll see how it turns out.
You had mentioned their risk reward. Um, I would hope this would be a reward type thing. But you did mention risk.
Of course.
Tell me about that.
Any investment has risk, right? Any worth investing in at least. Um, well, there's, there's, there are, there are numerous risks in building a dam project. Uh, uh, most notably is trying to understand what's underneath the surface of the dirt, uh, and and understanding that helps to uh, alleviate those risks. So all the things we're involved with right now are focused on addressing risk and uncertainty in the project. Um, and this is the cheapest time to be managing for risk and uncertainty. You don't, you don't manage for it when you're in construction because that's when it's super expensive and you're gonna lose your shorts. Um, so all of our focus right now is on risk. Another one is the operational risk, you know, what's the, what's the risk that the hydrology is going to be uh, drier, more dry, so dry over a longer period of time that you're not going to be able to fill the reservoir? And uh, you know, that is a potential risk. And one other thing that we're trying to do as a project team is making sure that all of our investors understand what those risks are so that they can make their assessments uh, as far as an investment is concerned.
Thank you very much. Great presentation. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions.
Supervisor Fraser.
I just wanted to check when all this work that you're doing right now, will it include the protocols that allow you to have captured that water during that specific time? Uh, and in part because I, you know, I think of what we've been involved in with releases of water into the Trinity River and how that had to be legislated and everything else. And now I'm just wondering, how how are you setting yourself up for the flexibility and and quick response that you need to to act in those situations?
Um, the answer to your question is yes, we are establishing all of those conditions primarily in our water right, which is a, which is like a property right, um, and a vested right, I guess you'd say. Um, is another way to look at it. And and in our critical permits, but in your permits, you, you know, you have to understand that these are permits that are issued under the current conditions. And presumably, conditions are always changing because we live in a dynamic world. And with, one of the risks uh, is that those permits, once this, once we create this asset, uh, we are all now bought into and become part of the health of the river and the assurance that the river will remain healthy, both for water supply and aquatic resources. And so uh, all that we do, and and I'm trying to create a culture that is really revolve around A, doing what you said you're gonna do, because the worst thing you can do is to say you're gonna do something and then try to get out of it later because then nobody will trust you. And number two, understand the system and invest in the system so that all of the uses can coexist in the way that continues to allow you to enjoy the benefits of your investment.
Well, thank you. It was, that was helpful and the presentation was great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry, thank you for your efforts to travel to be with us today and to present and for the open communication that we have and I look forward to hearing updates as things move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Take care.
Safe travels.
All right, we are now on item one point two, a proclamation uh, as March being the American Red Cross Awareness and Appreciation Month. So our requested action is to adopt a proclamation recognizing March as American Red Cross Month. And with us today, we have a representative of the Red Cross, Lucy Gamaris. A proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity, adopt March as American Red Cross Month. Whereas during American Red Cross Month in March, we celebrate the humanitarian spirit of Trinity County and reaffirm our commitment to help ensure no one faces a crisis alone. And whereas caring for one another is at the heart of our community and exemplified by the people of Trinity County, whose simple acts of kindness through the Red Cross provide help and hope in people's most difficult moments. Continuing the lifesaving legacy of Clara Barton, who founded the organization more than one hundred forty years ago to prevent, bring and alleviate human suffering. And whereas every day, these ordinary individuals lend a helping hand to make an extraordinary difference for neighbors in need. Whether it's providing emergency shelter, food and comfort for families displaced by home fires and other disasters, supporting military members and veterans, along with their families and caregivers, through the unique challenges of service, using vital skills like first aid and CPR to help others survive medical emergencies, or delivering international humanitarian aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by crisis around the world. And whereas their support, volunteerism and generous donations are critical to our community's resilience. We hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who fulfill Clara Barton's noble words. You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it. And ask everyone to join in this commitment. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity does hereby proclaim March two thousand twenty three as Red Cross Month and encourages all citizens of Trinity County to reach out and support. Duly passed and adopted this twenty second day of February, two thousand twenty three by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity. It is beautiful. Could I have a motion?
I move that we approve as written.
I will second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Luke Wyler, second by Supervisor Gogan.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser.
Aye.
Supervisor Luke Wyler.
Aye.
Chairman Com.
Aye. Thank you. So Lucy, if you would come, we would present this to you. Yes.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move in, excuse me, into public comment. This is a time for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. Do we have any public comment in the room? You may.
My name is Candy Hoover. I live in Douglas City. Uh, we are the main corridor between one oh one and I five now, two ninety nine is, okay? Uh, it's been weighing on me for a couple of years when the, uh, bless her heart, my little Megan, they had on collision. I had some medical issues that happened, so I had to focus on, I had some medical issues that happened, so I had to focus on that. Uh, in Humboldt County, between Eureka and Arcata was referred to as Blood Alley. Now, I can't tell you how many fatalities it took. I know the last fatality that they had, there were six people that get killed in the car, uh, one oh one going toward Arcata. For the old Arc, uh, old Arcata turnoff, there was six people, they all got killed. So they finally did something about that. Now, I don't know if y'all are familiar with this or not. But uh, they have uh, between Eureka and Arcata, they have forty five mile an hour sign up and you are to go forty five miles an hour, okay? Big flashing light. On it also is fine will be dubbed, okay? There's cameras, there will be pictures will be taken. It will be sent to your P up period. Um, you gotta have your headlights on. So my thought is, I don't know, you know, uh, this side of the rest area in DC and or the turnoff for the DC store. I'm not, I don't know. Clear out to this side of Steel Bridge Road. All right, we have commercial and we have residential, okay? We know it's only going to get busier, all right? Uh, just the other day, this week as a matter of fact, I was following a semi, all right? This side of the rest area, okay? He was loaded, I mean, loaded with a load of lumber. I was going seventy miles an hour. I could not catch him and I didn't want to catch him. All I'm, I don't know if A, do I need to go to the road department? B, do I need to start a petition? C, do I need to continue to come here with more info? I don't know. D, do I do all the above? Um, all I know is I'm trying, I want to get this out, okay, to y'all because I don't know where to go, how to, what to do.
So I have to interrupt you at this point because your three minutes are up. But if you would leave your name and contact information with our board clerk, um, I'm going to reach out to you and I'm going to put you in touch with Lieutenant Lale, who is our CHP commander for Weaverville. What you're talking about is a state highway and my suspicion is that you need to probably start with a California Highway Patrol.
No problem.
With your concern. So if you'll leave your information, I'll follow up with you.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Beautiful. I can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
And you know, you can always reach out to me.
Do we have, do we have any more uh, public comment? Yes, thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Everhart Schneider and I live in Hyampam at the end of Garrett Road. Garrett Road got washed out in January in that storm and severely damaged. It is a county road, county road three one three. And now we heard that the county seems to want to abandon that road or turn its back to the.
I'm gonna pause you for one second. I'm having trouble concentrating on what you're saying, so we'll stop your time. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Everhart Schneider.
Actually, just start us three minutes over if you would. I feel like I didn't concentrate at all.
Okay.
Thank you. I apologize.
Garrett Road got washed out and severely damaged. It's a county road and people considered it a county road for, I think, fifty years, maybe more. Um, now we heard that the county seems to want to abandon it and considers it a private road under the grounds that they could not find any written dedication for the road. So I did a little bit of research and I talked to Supervisor Carpenter Harris about it and she told me to talk to you about it. So count, the county maintained that road for fifty years. People assumed it's a county road, property owners, it runs across, assumed it was a dedication to the county. The county road and county road sign is at our gate. The county road and county road sign is at our gates. And what I found is that situations like that are considered an implied dedication and acceptance. The dedication was implied, was assumed by the landowners and the county accepted that dedication by maintaining it all the time. That's basically it, what I wanted to mention and ask you to look into that, consider that. Because it would be great if the county could take care of that road and we would greatly appreciate it, of course.
Okay, thank you for that. I believe that in our last meeting's board report out, you mentioned concerns that you had and I believe direction was given that staff would have conversations offline and that when this was ready to come back to any kind of a board consideration for decision that Director Caucus felt was at that juncture that that would take place. So if further is needed.
May I speak?
Yes.
The, in having some brief discussions with the County Roads Department, one of the challenges that they're facing in even beginning conversations about how we could potentially solve this problem is that because our books don't show this as being a county road, there is no funding available for them to bill their hours to in looking at the Garrett Road project. So in order to do that, we need to discover, find monies that we can make available specifically to the Roads Department so that they can build, bill rather to that pool of funding to even begin conversations around the Garrett Road. Because according to Director Caucus, they can't even work on it because they have nowhere to bill those hours to.
So we'll have to have this all agendized for conversation with backup data, you know, included so that it can, we can have that conversation, which we can't do today.
Right.
All right, thank you.
So that will be agendized for next meeting and I will.
If, if our CAO and we can, staff will work with you on that.
Thank you.
For decision. Okay, thank you. And thank you. Any other public comment in the room? Anna.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Anna Carson. I live in Weaverville, but I am here today as a representative of Trinity County Office of Education. So I wanted to introduce myself as the Local Childcare Planning Council Coordinator. The LPC is the acronym that I will use to describe that council. This is a council that is required by California statute and there is a coordinator and a council in every county across California. In California, in Trinity County, I am your coordinator. So I wanted to make you aware of an effort that we are doing right now. It is called Kids Count, okay? This is a required needs assessment that we are required to do every five years. This is for families and guardians with children zero to 12. And for the first time ever, we are trying to do a locally-led data collection effort. So historically, we have to use data sets that the state send us and it comes back to our council, which is a multi-agency council. It involves some of our supervisors, it involves HRN, it involves public health. So the data comes back to our council and they say, this doesn't look like Trinity County, throw it out the window. So for the first time ever, we are doing a locally-led data collection effort. This is live and happening right now for the month of February. We already have 150 families that have participated. There's a survey tool, there's a QR code, there's a link. I'm here today because, one, I want to make sure that you know about it. So we have branded it as Kids Count. Catchy, I know. We want to make sure that you know about it and we also want to make sure that you are, we're asking you to please help distribute this request to families, constituents in your districts. We have, at this point, we have really low representation from Hayfork, Post Mountain and Lewiston. Just looking, all of the data is collected via zip code. So even though the information is confidential, it's not anonymous, it's confidential, we can see by zip code who's responding. So we have some pretty low response rates. As we heard from our four-service partner, local key partnerships are critical, right? And so we're coming to asking you to be a partner with us, help distribute this information. Okay, there's the timer. Thank you. And so I'm going to leave a few copies and flyers. We are using an amazing analytical tool called Qualtrics. And once we get a report generated and recommendations made and submitted to California Department State Social Services in June, I will be coming back in August, hopefully as an agenda, to showcase you what we found, what our recommendations are so that we can help inform early education programs and policies across Trinity County. You know, kids are important. I know kids are important and I wanted you to know what we're doing. Thanks for your time. I'll leave a few back here.
Anna, one moment. Thank you for that. And if you would today, put a scanned copy of that document into all of our emails, I know I would be happy to forward that to my email recipient list. And then yes, let's work on getting your item agendas because I'm anxious to hear back. All right, thank you for being here.
We have a Zoom meeting coming up. Can you remind me what day?
I will have to send you the email. I didn't bring my phone in because I wasn't sure what timers and buzzers would be going off, so I just left it in the car. But I will email you so that you have it. Thank you in advance for your participation and support, Supervisor Gogan. Thanks for your work. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Any other public comment in the room?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Wonderful to see you in the position. Lisa Wright from Lewiston. I just wanted to, what great energy, right? So I'm going to start out with like the positive that I wanted to talk about, just sharing with you that. Flora, for those of you who don't know me, I'm the CEO of Flora, a local environmental consulting permitting firm. We're a subcontractor in Fish and Wildlife Qualified Cultivator Grant that was awarded through Cannabis for Conservation. So you can find it on the CDFW website, but Cannabis for Conservation is a nonprofit that we've worked with for a number of years on biological assessments. She has a real good, close relationship with Fish and Wildlife. Unfortunately, her proposal was approved. It was the largest out of this fund to date for $1.5 million over the next two years. And the impact on Trinity farmers is that there were 72 that were part of this program because qualified cultivator, you had to be qualified, right? So to qualify for that initial round, they needed to have a DCC provisional cannabis cultivation license and they needed to be in a priority watershed. And Jackie with Cannabis for Conservation focused on Hayfork watershed as well as the Lower South Fork. That's how we came up with the 72. They were, the grant award with the 1.5 million averages to just over about 20,000 per cultivator. And that doesn't go directly to them. That's for services to transition them from DCC provisional to DCC annual licenses. As a subcontractor, many of those services flow through us. There's a small cultivator match and the first year it's $2,000 and the next year it's 2,500. And those services might range from doing full stico documents, doing biological assessments, doing pre-construction biological surveys. We tried to assess each individual cultivator and their need at the time when the application was made. The other thing that it does is there's a compliance package that Flora provides and that basically makes sure they're in compliance with everything. So their renewals, local state, their water board reports, their DCC electric usage, et cetera. But I see, I use up a lot of time. Good news, we love seeing that money come into Trinity County certainly and to help the farmers. They have their DCC equity fee waiver. Unfortunately, I understand the DCC equity wasn't approved for Trinity, but maybe we can reapply and get some funds for them. Because we literally have hundreds of farmers right now that are facing unemployment again for another season. So I'm anxious to listen to an update from Director Plabani and I'll return with some of my other concerns or statements in the future. So thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the room? Okay, any on Zoom? I have Scott White.
Are you ready supervisors?
Yes.
Good morning supervisors, Chair, Scott White, Lewiston. I have a bad cold, so you'll be glad that I'm not there in the room with you today. On January 3rd, you adopted findings of fact and conditions of approval for our lot line adjustment project and we are truly grateful for that. During public comment on February 7th, I told you about some issues we had run into and that I hope to be here this meeting to say they have been resolved. Sadly, the situation is now even worse. Your county council told us we must file a citizen complaint with the CAO and we have done so. I have provided a copy to you and Ashley, Ashley did helping me out with it and I really appreciate it. Sorry for the typos. I will try to get it in really quick. But anyway, you have the information that I submitted with that complaint. Just as this happened previously, county staff are not following applicable government code, county code, and now even worse, they're not following the approval that you gave us. We are worried that once again, we will face the dual problems of lack of experienced staff in planning, which is the lead agency, and lack of opportunity to be allowed to present all relevant information. Your new interim CAO has received our request and told us she is working on it. We have our analysis of applicable laws and procedures done and are ready to meet with her. We sincerely hope to achieve a positive resolution working with her and we will report back to you. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other race, you know. That we will close public comment and like a five-minute recess if we could. Re-adjourn at 10:45. 10:45.
Good morning, ma'am. Interim Deputy Director of Building and Planning, Ed Presley. I just had a couple of things that I wanted to touch on. First, I would like to thank the board for recognizing March for the American Red Cross. I have a lot of stories over two decades in the military and being in various places overseas where they helped us out. They help bring people home and they take care of a lot of people around the world. So it's a lot more than just, you know, somebody coming into a room and saying they work with the American Red Cross. I hope everyone understands the enormity of that impact because they have a global impact. It's not, it's not just in the room or in a particular place in the United States. So I just really appreciate their, they do some pretty miraculous things for our people, our men and women overseas. So my second thing, just to segue into my second thing here. There has been some, some ground gained in the general plan. I didn't want everyone to think that just because you're not hearing about it on a weekly basis that it's not going on. There are things that are happening. And so with a question recently, I asked our consultant team to provide an overview update to the board to give everybody. And, you know, I can apologize for not having this right after the turn of the year because I should have recognized the fact that we had two new supervisors and maybe they need to be brought up to bear in exactly where the, where the plan is. Realizing that it's a multi-year plan, but it's also something that, you know, we need to keep on the front foremost. Coming out of the bad weather, and I know we're going to have some probably in the next couple of days, but as the season gets better, there's going to be a lot more happening. So I appreciate your patience with that. That's going to be on March 7th if they're going to give that presentation. The third and last thing, because I like being short and sweet, is the low-density rural housing. Just so everybody is aware of that as well, there's been a couple of questions about that of recent weeks. It's currently at the state and they're going to be reviewing it. And I was told last week that it should take about four weeks. So that gives them about three more weeks to respond to let us know how everything's going. I don't anticipate any kind of disruption in moving forward with the ordinance. We just really would like to get their sign off on it before we say it's good to go and let's move forward with getting, you know, permits out there for the low-density rural housing. And that's all I have.
When was that going to be in?
So they told me, they told me four weeks last week. So it should be about three weeks left for that.
Middle of next month?
Yes. And if we, if we get any kind of, you know, because there's always two ways to do it. One is that everything goes through just, you know, leggity split and everything is good to go. And the other is if they have any issues. And if they have any issues, I can obviously let everyone know that there was an issue that we got to readdress or something like that, but we don't anticipate any of that. But that's where we're at. That's all I have.
Any department heads on Zoom?
You missed one more.
Oh, I thought that you would give your update when we had the staff committee report. We have an additional. My apologies, Director Plabani. Good to see you.
Good morning, Chair. Supervisors, Drew Plabani, Trinity County Planning Department, Cannabis Division Director. I do have a number of updates for you. I guess I'll start off with my normal licensing stats, which we haven't seen a significant amount of change to over the last, you know, month and a half or so. But I'll go into kind of the change in that trend that I foresee in a little bit. But currently, we have received 404 appendixy documents of that. We have now successfully approved and noticed 122 of them in the paper. And of those, you know, noticed in the paper, we have 78 that have been picked up and are active. Related to kind of the progress we're making in terms of our engagement with the consultants and the implications that that has on the licensing trends. We re-engaged the second consulting group, LACO. And now both groups are working under a 10-project bid batch concept. And so we received the quote from, a quote from both of them separately. And I'm not going into specific numbers, but essentially the technical review should now cost just under $900 per project, which is a significant improvement from, you know, a couple of months ago when I said, you know, depending on how you slice the numbers, it could be the better part of $10,000 that was being spent for each project to be reviewed. I think even with a more conservative set of numbers, it's still probably a six-fold reduction in the cost that was previously being incurred to review those documents. So I'm pretty, you know, excited about that and I do expect to see, starting this coming week in the newspaper and, you know, an uptick in the projects that we will have approval for and be noticing. I guess the bad news that I have to report, which Lisa sort of mentioned, is that our type 2 funding request with GoBiz for the equity program was denied. I had a follow-up conversation with the, with our grant coordinator and the head of that grants program. And simply, the criteria that was found through the equity program assessment and the establishment of the program manual, the state felt that the criteria were too inclusive or too broad. And so for that was the main reason that they did not approve the equity funding request. So over the next few months, at some point, I would like to bring the approved program manual back for your review and ideally approval so that I can resubmit at the end of this year for the next round of equity grant funding. Last week, I submitted the final budget amendment adjustments requested by the DCC for our local jurisdiction assistance grant and also submitted the biannual report that was due on February the 15th. Yesterday, we had a meeting with the Norelma Quinto tribal elders and were working on establishing an MOU with them for their involvement in environmental review, tribal consultations going forward for cannabis projects. And lastly, we have begun working with the Mentor Harnish and RingCon team on ordinance revisions to the cannabis ordinance. And my hope is that in the next few weeks, they will have come up with the first round of the administrative draft for public review and for your review as well. I think that wraps up my report out for now. I don't know if you have any questions specific to any of those items, but.
What was, what was the last thing, Drew?
The last thing was the ordinance revisions with Mentor Harnish and RingCon.
Oh.
RingCon? Help me with that.
RingCon is, I believe, the environmental consulting firm that subcontracted along with Mentor Harnish.
Other questions?
Yeah. So Drew, if you bring this back to a
Yeah, so Drew, if you bring this back to us, not so broad of a scope and we approve it, when is the next round of funding and how much could we expect to possibly get?
So the next round of, I believe, the application window opens in October of this year. And the awards period is pretty much the same as, as it was for last year, so we probably wouldn't hear back until January twenty twenty-four. The one change to the grant solicitation between fiscal year, last, last year and this year going forward is that grant funds requested and approved over five hundred thousand dollars require a one-to-one funds match from the local, the jurisdiction receiving those funds. So realistically, we'd be looking at a maximum of five hundred thousand dollars next year.
Thank you for reaching out to the Noralma Tribe. I would like to ask you to, or I guess I can't ask you. I would enjoy if the Sunangway Tribe was also included in, because they, they're the native tribe within my district down, down river. So I think that would also be great to include them if that was something that that we could do.
Yeah, if, if, do you have the contact information for whoever the appropriate point of contact is?
I do.
I'll email you and then I can follow up and try and include them in
Thank you.
Further discussions.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Thanks, appreciate it. Any department heads on Zoom? I have no department heads on.
Okay. A report from our county administrative officer.
Good morning, just a couple of items. Suzie and Craig and I have continued to work on fee study updates. We were hoping to have brought that back to you today, however, we will have it at the next board meeting. Some of the changes with the departments, with it being quite a bit, so we're still hashing through that. However, you know, we discussed some strategies to stay on track to have the other departments in kind of short order come behind so that we're on track with a June submission with the other departments included. So I feel good about our strategies in place for that. And I am continuing to work with county council on the fee waiver policy and procedure.
Okay.
And then I will be working with our H R staff with and our C A O staff on bringing back a, or bringing to you a COVID resolution. As you're aware, the state will be ending their state of emergency on the twenty-eighth of this month. And then the federal government has identified May eleventh as their date for ending the public health emergency. And so we will be evaluating resolutions we need for the board to approve and then what changes in county policy. I've been reading through Cal OSHA, their temporary emergency standards. To some extent are being folded into what they're calling a two-year adoption. And so just reading through on what direction that we will be giving to staff.
Okay.
In that regard.
Okay.
End of report.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, reports from members of the Board of Supervisors. Let's start with Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
I am very excited about this report. I've been thinking about it for, for a while, so. First, I would like to say that we had what I believe to be a very successful meeting in Junction City with the Department of Transportation. Folks came down and met with the community at the Junction City School regarding the Canyon Creek Roads Project. And we had, I believe, roughly ninety-nine percent turnout of all the folks that live beyond, beyond the slide and, and on that road up there. And it was just really, I think it was, it was, I felt that there was good communication and I felt like the community really, really appreciated the time that our, our staff took to, to make that meeting happen. And I also feel like there was some good knowledge that was absorbed on both sides of, of the table there that evening. So thank you for, for giving us the opportunity to have that, that meeting and the staff doing that. I immediately left from that meeting and traveled to Sacramento and departed for Washington, D C the following day and attended the, the Naco Conference in, in Washington, D C. It was a very, very informative, a lot of meat on the bones conference. I was really impressed with the lineup of folks that we got to hear speak and sat in the presence of some of the big decision makers in our country, including the president, came and spoke at our luncheon. So that was, that was really kind of monumental. You don't get to really see the president speak in person very often, so that was enjoyable. But some of the things that I'm bringing back from that, they're pretty, pretty deep and lengthy, so I'll just hit the tops of, of them. One of the things that came out of COVID that was, that was positive is Congress now recognizes that the counties have quote unquote been unmuted because we're able to, the whole zooming, you know, brought, brought everyone more face to face than they ever really have before through that, that communication conduit. So they're hearing a lot more from counties than they ever have before. And when they did a survey, they said roughly, it takes roughly ten percent of a constituent's base for, to, to bend the ear of Congress and make them make maybe a different decision than what they thought of. So it really doesn't take a lot of pressure. It's just a consistent, a consistent effort. And they, with talking with several Congress folks from the House and then also from the Senate, they said that it's more and more important to hear from, COVID did make it, make them very aware that the leadership has to be able to flow through the conduits from the government, the federal government through the states and to the counties because the county government is where they actually make contact with, with humanity. So they're recognizing the value on a greater level of, of county supervisors, boards or commission boards. That was very interesting and, and I was happy to hear that. The Secure Rural Schools Act is an active topic of, of high interest. And I think that we should really jump into that momentum and ride some of that current that already has been generated via our superintendent of schools here, but then also many, many of the other rural counties are really pushing on making sure that these fundings come through. So I think it would be in our best interest to align with those voices. The, I, I went predominantly, the, the two topics of interest that I tried to stay in theme of was the wildland fire and public lands issues and then also the opioid addiction and mental health concerns in rural communities and rural regions. So that's where I spent most of, most of my time. In regards to the U S Forest Service, we got, we were set in the presence of the chief and he, I would just like to echo that everything that we heard today locally is, is seriously coming from the top down. He is very interested in making sure that we staff up our forests and that we're getting work done on the ground and that he spoke directly to the ability to harvest timber more regularly and to be able to get that burnt timber off the ground faster so that it still has some viability. And then also just kind of making sure they're aware that their forest, that their forest wildfires impact county roads. And so that was great, many, it was just nice to hear that we're not the only ones, like we're not, we're not crazy. So this, these things are happening all over. They're very aware that their wildfires are impacting county roads and they're looking toward that good neighbor agreement to, to be able to help address some of those things. They're also very aware that the wildfires have been impacting private homeowners' ability to maintain and afford homeowners insurance. That was something that is a huge issue, especially in my district. And so I was very happy to hear that that conversation is happening up on the hill as well. There's a lot of stuff going on in terms of, of what, what was shared today with the Forest Service, land management, land restoration and really just cleaning up the whole forest and road, road situation. So that was good. In regards to the fundings that's coming from the lawsuits and the different things from the opioid addiction story and the mental health problems that, that our nation as a whole is, is dealing with. There are lots of, there's money that is going to come down in an effort to try to prevent our jails from being filled up with people who are having mental events. So looking towards building or creating places that are somewhat confined and, and keeping people safe, but not a jail scenario to help try to work through some of those things because most of the time of when someone is jailed from those types of events, whether it's mental illness or drug overdose or what have you, they just continue to be re-jailed rather than helped. So that was, that's good that that conversation's being heard. Also, there's concerns and, and work being made towards the issue that when people are incarcerated, their healthcare drops. If they're on state or federal healthcare, it, it stops that moment and then you put, you let them out and they have no way to tend to their, their health issues. So that's a conversation that's being happened. I think we probably have experienced that here with folks. And then quite a bit of the money that's going to come down through this mental health initiative is for transitional programs and I'm really happy to know that they're not just going to make the government be the replacement of the family, but support the families and also funnel some of that money through other nonprofit organizations and faith-based organizations to help the recovery process. One, a couple more things. I was, this was a really good conference. I learned a lot and made a lot of connections. I'm happy to be a part of the Naco Rural Action Caucus. I signed up for that and just really learning how to use the, the Naco team to help our voices be heard in the, in the hallways of Congress and to find out all the different ways that they can help us. And one, this is the last thing. Because we are a member of Naco, there is an opportunity for a Live Healthy Prescription Program. And I don't know if we are part of that, but it's something I think we might want to look into. Because our county is a member of Naco, there's an opportunity for our citizenry to have discounts on their prescription drugs because of being a member of Naco. So I would like to check into that and, and share that with, with Liz and see if that's something and with Jill to see if that's something that we might be able to offer to our citizenry. There's many other options within Naco as well that can help boost some, bridge some of the gaps that maybe we have between what the county and our state can provide and what the Naco organization can provide. So thank you for enduring my enthusiasm. It was a really, it was a really good conference and I'm looking forward to building the relationships that I, that I made there. And then one more thing, I reached out to Congressman, our Assemblyman Wood and Senator McGuire regarding the frontier issue on our landline phones. And I have gotten responses back from both of them that their staff is furthering the inquiry up the chain of command in hopes to get our landline phones restored in the down river communities. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So you mentioned going to jail, you have benefits, we'll say. You're incarcerated for X amount of time, you come out, you have no benefits? Is that, is that the way it works now?
Liz, can you please speak to that?
I will speak in very general. This is regarding Medi-Cal, not private insurance. So Medi-Cal, you go in and you're incarcerated. In theory, jail health would take care of your needs while you're there. And then when you exit, you could reapply for Medi-Cal services. So there are a number of initiatives and changes coming in that space so that we can work with the jail and by we, I mean social services, working with the jail directly in a partnership to be provided information on pre-release dates and then send staff in there to help them become eligible prior to leaving. So these are really large programs that are rolling out in real time this year. Okay, and it's very complicated.
I imagine.
Yes.
And mental health has a lot to do with that?
Mental health is intertwined in all of our programming. We, we really depend on each other.
Thank you.
I just want to say, well done Supervisor Carpenter Harris on, you've only been in the seat for a few weeks. We whisk you away to Washington, D C and you go jump on a rural caucus. Nicely done. Thank you for that.
Oh, I really, I was really happy I reconnected with some people who I've known from prior public service and happy to see that those relationships still exist and look forward to utilizing those relationships, you know, in resiliency across county lines with other rural commissioners and supervisors.
Very good. Very good.
Great job. Super.
Thanks.
I didn't do anything. So while you were gone, we had some T R P stuff and one of them was the Division of Interested Parties. And it was just talking about reconcetation and opening up doors to the water management of the river in a way which took place while you were gone. Then we had a proposal review of all the things the restoration is thinking about funding or having fund, how they grade them and how they rank and then how they get funded, which we'll continue on. And then we had our T M C monthly meeting a couple of days ago and it was prefunctory, kind of short. It just kind of sets us up for our two-day meeting at the end of next month. Yeah, so we, yeah, so we have two-day, full-day meetings. I'm sorry, so we have two-day, full-day meetings coming up at the end of next month that are really the, the backbone of, of what we're going to do with T M C. And they're long meetings. I think fortunately this coming up month, they're here in Weverville. So it should be fairly easy on us this time around and there's a lot of work to be done and I'm, I'm really glad to have you aboard. And law and knowledge is great. I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Okay, Supervisor Lutweller.
Okay, for out of county travel, Supervisor Gogan and I attended a senior officials workshop for all hazards. And what that really involved was a lot of education and then table exercises regarding how leaders of various entities work together in disasters, emergencies, and, and they had some great examples and exercises that we could work through and, and it, so it became a very practical application of what they were trying to teach us as well. I thought it was very well done. On the Fire, Trinity County Fire Chiefs Association, like Supervisor Carpenter Harris, I was trying to reach out on behalf of our county with Frontier Communications. My approach was I connected with the C E O through LinkedIn. He responded within twenty-four hours. And within twenty-four hours of that, I had contacts from three people in his executive team trying to follow through and address the problems. I tried to get out of the middle of that and get them connected to staff. So passed along that information to the Office of Emergency Services and to the sheriff and to the C A O's office so that they could then use that level of visibility. But that they, I was very impressed with the response, so we hopefully have that. And they were looking for specifics about the ongoing residential side, the part about the sheriff and the jails, that was easy and they were trying to work to make that happen faster than was currently set up. But on the resident side, they kept asking, and I said, well, I don't have that information, but the information is available. Who, who do we get it to? So we can continue to follow up on that. We'll hear about this later. I continue to work with team on the cannabis financials. We still want to bring that back before the board. On the strategic plan, we continue to work through that process and continue to modify it as well. So when we bring this back to you, we are identifying things that need to change in the plan, making it richer and more actionable. So it'll be clear who owns each component of the plan and how will we measure success? And that process is continuing. Onboarding, I think we have a number of different onboarding opportunities. We, we are going to be bringing on a new C A O pretty soon, so I'm reached out to offer to help on that as well so that we can make sure that we have a very strong onboarding schedule and plan for our new C A O. Regarding economic development, our meetings continue in that area. And one of the more recent things is I, I reached out to someone who was involved for many years in the Reading area with economic development and venture support and now is working in that same capacity in Anderson. And she has agreed to come up here and meet with some of us to help understand what she has seen work and not work so that we can learn from that and take advantage of things that she can share with us. And coming up, we have Supervisor Carpenter-Harris and I will be attending the new Supervisor Institute, the last two days of that workshop series. So we're looking forward to that. And I have a number of things that I'll be trying to bring forward on the agenda in the future. One of those that's been mentioned before is the snow maintenance for the volunteer fire departments. But I'll follow up on those behind the scenes.
I had no out-of-county travel this, since our last meeting. I did yesterday. Yeah, yesterday. I was in town here. I met with Director Caucus about the snow removal issue. So I will touch base with you on some of that. I also met with Director Presley yesterday concerning the limited density rural dwelling stuff after the public comment we'd had previously, wondering if we need to have the ad hoc going again. So I think that Director Presley touched on that. I think that's moving forward. Other than that, I don't have anything to report.
And I didn't report out publicly that I did follow up with the individual who brought that to public comment, that I had reached out to Cody Smith in the Building Department and that he had let me know that this was in process. So I did let that person who had come to public comment know, but I didn't let the public generally know. So fault of my own and that basis has been covered. I attended a meeting with Supervisor Lou Wiler that he had set up with a company called Civitas. And they are an entity that specializes in helping counties move their economic development forward with some creative fun, creative funding opportunities that local partners can define themselves in different ways, both interest-wise and location-wise. And so looking at some possibilities there, I really appreciate Supervisor Lou Wiler's continued efforts to find new discussion points and ideas to keep this process rolling forward. So good things are on the horizon there. I hosted two broadband update meetings that included in different components, Connie Stewart, who is our Region's Broadband Consortium Lead through Cal Poly Humboldt, Planning Staff Barbara Hayes, who is the Chief Economic Development Officer at RCRC. And she is also the staff support for the Golden State Connect Authority. And then the local internet service provider who is assisting me in understanding all of the technicalities that one word, not understanding what that means can make a big difference in decisions that get made. And so those conversations have been fruitful and I think giving some understanding back to RCRC of just, here's how it's actually playing out on the ground. Here's how people are perceiving what is going on. And she was appreciative to have that conversation. That was good. I did attend the Trinity County Collaborative Field Trip last Friday and was able to visit two or three sites before I needed to be in another meeting. But really good conversation is taking place in support of what Supervisor Berkey shared in her presentation this morning, bringing the different partners together to realize that the Forest Service knows full well, they can never implement all this by themselves. They need the partners. And what I really like is that even with how vital the Watershed Center and the RCD is going to be to all of this, they also realize that they can't be the sole players and make this happen. So there's such good opportunity for new businesses to spring up and they're, they're asking for that and encouraging that and creating plans where proposals will be submitted and, and folks will be able to see, you know, to what level of investment would I maybe see myself, you know, participating and growing a business of my own where the, the work will be spread and there's opportunity. So the most exciting news I have to report, arrived with a phone call from Senator Maguire a week ago today. I didn't have that number programmed into my phone. And so when I saw the 707 prefix, something said, you should probably pick this up. And it was just an absolute delight that he could have staffed that out. And he did. And he called me personally to say that he had heard my plea and reached out and made his magic work with the Division of Boating and Waterways to provide the evidence of their commitment for the $165,000 balance that's needed toward the engineering portion of getting our Minersville Boating Ramp, that whole project engineered. And they, the press release that came through his assistant Nora Mount through the office, yeah, pop it up there, is just exciting. And we're looking at, if you scroll to the bottom, they tell us that construction will, I have it here, construction of the boat ramp is set to begin in 2025. Boating and Waterways has allocated 4.85 million for the project overall, which will include ramp placement with a wider concrete boat ramp turnarounds and a sidewalk, new restrooms, a dual cable anchor system and designated parking areas. So thank you to Senator Maguire. Appreciate the energy and his involvement. And just on a little side note, look forward to him being our auctioneer again at the multi-community entity-sponsored gala that will happen on April the 15th. Okay, that is the end of my report. Moving on to reports on the ad hocs. So with regard to the Good Neighbor Authority, that project is in District Ranger Tara Jones' hands as she continues to review that with, again, the goal of being sure with as much certainty as, as possible. But once that goes into the grants and agreements review, it will come out clean. Because if there are revisions that further have to be made and then this has to all be rerouted back in, now we're approaching the kind of expected typical spring bottleneck that happens in that review process. And she's trying very hard to avoid that. I didn't ask her if I could share the exact dollar amount. She's trying really hard to front load a big chunk of money into that agreement. She doesn't know if she'll get it. She's shooting for the moon here. And I just really applaud her, her efforts on our behalf. And we've had multiple conversations about how the receipts off of those projects will then refund, you know, those continued projects going forward. This is a really exciting thing for us. All right. So a report from the strategic plan. Supervisor Lou Wiler, if you had anything else to say about that, kind of?
Well, right now I'm wait, I'm waiting to have some time with interim chair so that we can confirm the way forward. But the idea is that we will shift gears to meeting every other week so that we can keep momentum without tying up too much time and be on a pace that would allow the staff to be presenting to the new CAO their view of the strategic plan fully fleshed out within his first three weeks on the job. And so that he could then bring that back to us in a meeting soon after that. So that's, that's kind of the pace that we're trying to set.
Good. Thank you. Really appreciate staff's efforts on this. They are so busy already and yet they see the value and the need for this and appreciate their ability and willingness to fit that into what they're already doing. Okay, on the Trinity County water-related ad hoc that I set up, it was brought to my attention that I need to further define what I mean by that. So I did so for the newspaper and will do so here publicly for the record. As a county, we need a better defined policy framework regarding statewide legislative and litigation issues pertaining to water. And specifically, Trinity County Water Rights. This ad hoc is to review these issues over the next 10 months and report back regarding any policy recommendations for discussion and possible adoption by the board. And the ad hoc terminates with my chairmanship and that was previously stated. So with that further definition, Supervisors Gogan and Carpenter-Harris, are you still in?
Absolutely.
All right. Staff Committee Report on the Cannabis Budget from Cannabis Division Director Pobani.
Chair Supervisors, so since the last Board of Supervisors meeting, when I gave a presentation, I've had the opportunity to have several more meetings in order to continue forward with the objectives of this staff committee. I met with Senior Financial Analyst Susie Hawkins and interim CAO Hamilton. It's last week or the week before now, it's been kind of a blur. And so we are continuing to work on the requested spreadsheet. And ultimately, I think what we'll bring forward is, you know, a staff report with findings and recommendations. And so we look forward to having that before you in the not-too-distant future.
Thank you. Thanks for your effort. Appreciate it. Okay. All right. Let's move into the Consent Calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters that will be acted upon by the board by one roll call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request an item be polled and considered separately. Is there any public comment on consent items?
I have no raised hands.
Do we have any?
Jill just sent me a chat. She would like to speak on 3.9, on the Reading Jet Center.
Okay, so we will pull that item and allow her to speak on that. So with regard to the remaining items, do any supervisors wish to pull any items?
All right. I, I just have a question about that. Is that somebody that just wanted to have public comment on item 3.9? Because you can just give the three minutes to speak on that without having pulled the item. And then we can decide if we need to pull it afterward if somebody wants to speak to it.
I got an email from her right before the meeting started and I believe there's an update to
Okay.
The
All right. So then it wouldn't need to be pulled.
Any other items? No? Okay. Would entertain a motion on the balance of the consent calendar?
So moved.
The second?
I will second.
All right. So we have motion by Supervisor Frazier, second by Supervisor Gogan.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter-Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Lou Wiler?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
All right. Item 3.9, pulling that up now. Approve an agreement with Reading Arrow Enterprises Incorporated doing businesses Reading Jet Center to provide general aircraft repairs and/or replacement, aircraft repair services, annual inspections and other aircraft maintenance on the Trinity County Sheriff's Office aircraft on an as-needed basis. Fiscal impact stated to be up to $8,000 per year from the sheriff's budget. I'll let Jill go ahead and speak to the item. Good morning.
Good morning. So this is just a standard agreement. We had an agreement previously with Benton Air Center, but they went out of business. So this is replacing that one. The only change that they had was in the insurance section. There were volunteers listed as being covered. They requested that be scratched and County Council and Trindell agreed that that wasn't anything that was major that had to be included. So we scratched that. I believe that was it. There was some back and forth as far as the limits were concerned, but County Council and Trindell were also fine with the limits that we came to. So there are minor changes. Nothing that majorly changed the contract, but I just was told that if there's any change after it's been submitted and gone before the public, we had to pull it and just make you aware.
Perfect. Thank you for doing that. A quick question. So with your volunteers, do they just sign releases? How do you, how do you work with that?
I don't believe we ever have volunteers that go up. Usually it's only full-time employees.
Okay.
That would be going up. And this is specifically to just maintenance for the aircraft. So this isn't, yeah, this is just for the covering Reading Jet Center and their maintenance, the annual inspection and any maintenance that happens to the aircraft.
Okay, I follow you.
Having to do with flying the aircraft itself.
Okay. Any questions of supervisors? All right. Any public comment on this item?
I have no raised hands.
Okay. Close public comment, bring it back to the board and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
Okay. Motion by Supervisor Frazier, second by Supervisor Lou Wiler. Supervisor Lou Wiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier? Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter-Harris?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
All right. Public hearings. Building and Development Services, item 4.1, conduct a public hearing to consider taking the following actions concerning the county buildings and construction ordinance Title 15. Number one, find the adoption and implementation of this ordinance to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to secret guidelines, Section 15061B3, common sense exemption, which applies to projects where the activity will not result in a significant effect on the environment. Number two, introduce and waive the reading of an ordinance establishing Trinity County Code, Section 15.26, regarding electric vehicle charging station permit expediting, no fiscal impact. And with this, I believe we hear from Associate Planner Skylar Fisher. Is she on the line?
Hello, am I, am I coming in okay?
You are. Thank you. Good morning.
Okay. Hi, good morning. Thank you Board Chair, Supervisors and members of the public for hearing my item. This is my first time zooming into the board chamber, so it's very strange being in the box. But we will persevere. So this item is, as Chair Cox said, a draft electric vehicle charging station or EVCS permit streamlining ordinance. This draft ordinance was brought forward to the Trinity County Board of Supervisors due to California Assembly Bills 1236 and Assembly Bill 970, which directs local governments to create an ordinance to streamline the electric vehicle charging station permit review process through limiting the review of these permits to health and safety concerns, in addition to creating an expedited timeline for review based on the number of electric vehicle charging stations being requested in the permit. In addition to this, these assembly bills create new parking space requirements to accommodate the creation of EVCS. So there is a draft ordinance and checklist attached to the packet submitted to NOVIS, which was reviewed by the state and meets the state requirements. This item is coming back to the board. It went to the board and was heard on December 6, 20th and 29th of 2022. On the last meeting, the 29th, the item was referred to the Planning Commission to review the draft ordinance to see if there, if it was consistent with our zoning districts, if there are any zoning districts that electric vehicle charging stations wouldn't necessarily be consistent with. And so the draft ordinance went to the Planning Commission on January 26, 2023. And there were some changes to the ordinance from when it went to the board and when it went to the Planning Commission. There were some administrative edits. We got some feedback that some of the language in the preamble was a little confusing, a little too wordy. So we changed that a little bit as well as removing excess spacing that we overlooked when we first presented that ordinance to the board. But there were no substantive changes. At the Planning Commission, the discussion primarily focused around the general descriptions of the various zoning districts, what the, what the intent of these zoning districts are, as well as the different general plan designations of the county, which I believe a matrix is also attached to the staff packet describing what the different designations are, how they correspond to different zoning districts, that sort of thing, as well as there was a discussion regarding Trinity County's capacity in regards to if we have enough power to support a hypothetical increase of electric vehicle charging stations if this ordinance were to be passed. So after all that discussion, the Planning Commission made a motion, a unanimous motion to recommend to the Board of Supervisors to find all zoning districts compatible with electric vehicle charging stations. They also asked the board to consider ways to encourage electric vehicle charging stations, one such way that was One such way that was discussed at the meeting was potentially not increasing taxes on parcels that have electric vehicle charging station improvements. Because that was a concern cited that we're not really incentivizing people to develop these stations if they're going to get increased taxes by doing so. And finally, the planning commission recommended that the Board of Supervisors adopt the current checklist and draft ordinance as is. And so all of that being considered, the planning department staff agree and affirm the recommendation of the planning commission to the board and recommend that the Board of Supervisors find this project to be exempt under CEQA per the common sense exemption and to adopt the draft amendment to the building and construction ordinance to create this electric vehicle charging station streamline, permit streamlining ordinance, excuse me. And I can answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Great presentation. Appreciate that. Any questions of board members?
Also for later.
We will open the item for public comment. Any public comment in the room? Any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands, no chats.
Okay. We'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. Supervisor Frazier.
Okay, I, I do have some issue with the, the planning commission findings. I mean, and nothing personal, but I I can't agree that all zoning districts are appropriate for electric vehicle charging stations. We have zoning districts that don't even allow housing by right, so I'm zoning districts include open space, timberland. There are places this does not fit, and I have an issue with that. I still struggle a lot even with allowing commercial electric vehicle charging stations. And even in rural residential areas, I mean, we've just recently had long discussions at Board of Supervisors meetings concerning whether or not we should allow minor subdivisions in some of these areas where people are concerned that it's going to affect the quality of their life because it changes the dynamic of their neighborhood. And to say that this will not have an effect if we I realize there's safeguards, but they're not very safe when you have no, there's no notification going out to the public and none of this stuff. I, I struggle with it and I don't know how we can fix the issues I have with the ordinance that we've been presented. I really don't, so. I was hoping the planning commission would do a deeper dive, really, and come up with, okay, this is why it fits in the zoning district. This is why it doesn't in this one and, and really flesh this out and have an ordinance that fit Trinity County. And I, I was disappointed that to say that it fits in all zoning districts. I can't agree.
You have thought?
I just, do we need to have a motion to have this discussion?
Not yet. I think we're, I think we're fine. I think we're not leading into
Or we can make a motion.
Well, okay, I'll put a motion on the table. I'm, I'm going to move that we adopt this item as presented today.
I will second.
Okay. And I'll give you some reasons for that. I, I hear what you're saying and I, I respect what you're saying. I think what trumps that in my head at this point is that we were required to start looking into this years ago. That didn't happen. We are outside of a window of compliance right now, and I just feel like the state has preempted this field and we can't change that. And we have limited resources and to me, this isn't a fight that I want to risk Trinity County resources to engage to where if we want to take this on, I think that working through legislation is probably the avenue rather than risking what, what we can do sitting here as a board. You know, we've asked council about that numerous times and the answer that comes back is there are no guarantees what the state may do. I feel like the safer avenue is to say, okay, and we'll I think also looking at what is the likelihood that something like this, that's so disturbing and so egregious is going to happen, if, if somebody here is going to do that, then somebody here is going to deal with the neighbors that are here. And it just doesn't seem like it's highly likely to me, so weighing those two things, I just land on I'm taking the low risk legislature path.
So I, I just want to follow up on what supervisor Frazier said and ask staff, I guess, so if, if this is open to any parcel anywhere because there's any zoning is okay with it, then what, what processes are in place or would be in place to prevent it from going into someplace that clearly it shouldn't be? Are there, are there other components of the ordinance that address what supervisor Frazier identified as concerns or not?
So currently, there's no language in the draft ordinance which would prohibit the stations in any zoning district. I understand the concern about open space and I've also tried to spend a lot of time keyword searching zoning and these assembly bills and all the messaging that the state has been putting out in regards to like encouraging charging stations, but everything that I've seen so far is essentially encouraging it to just be a building permit process and that zoning isn't really considered in the review at all. So I don't think that's really the answer we were hoping for, but that's what I've seen.
So, so, yeah, thank you, Skylar. In that example, so if someone came into an open space that usually is only certain things are allowed and not much, and they are submitting that and it's coming through this process, this process would say, okay, or would it probably get stopped because you couldn't put the driveway in to get to the space that you wanted to put it in, or I'm just trying to figure out if there's anything practically that would prevent something bad from happening, and if it, if there isn't, then what would be the county's recourse?
I mean, the one thing is that it is reviewed for public health and safety. So if there was a major public health or safety concern associated with putting a charging station on a parcel, that would be caught.
Well, my concerns are not addressed. I'm, I mean, it's I, I don't know, maybe I'm going back too far in time to planning commission days, but this is something that, and it's not just open sip space, it's not just T P C, it's, I mean, we have a lot of zoning districts in Trinity County that this doesn't fit in, even class, unclassified. That can be anything in Trinity County. We have it just, to say that this should be allowed in any zoning district, and I would be fine with it if we could separate out commercial and private. Anybody should be able to put a charging station in their yard. I have no problem with that. If it's for their own personal use, but a commercial charging station should be only allowed where commercial activities are allowed. You can't put a gas station in, in your yard. You can't build a store in rural residential. You can't then the, this is something that should be in highway commercial, mostly in highway commercial zoning where it's for highway activities. It's a, and it's a commercial activity. So I, I struggle with it. I can kind of understand where supervisor Cox is coming from, but at the same time, it's a lot more difficult to say, yeah, we're going to allow it in every zoning and then we have to, maybe nothing happens, but if somebody comes in and says, I'm putting in two hundred charger station and the community's up in arms, then we find ourselves in this situation where we're trying to come up with findings on why to deny something that we said we would allow because we know it doesn't fit, but we said it's allowed. You don't have to look too far to find where that doesn't work. We've been dealing with cannabis ordinances for the entire time I've been on the planning commission or the board. And when you do something just because the state said so, or, well, it has to be, we have to take that easy way now, it always comes back around to, we have a major problem now that we could have solved and we're trying to find a way to weasel out of something we should never got ourselves into in first place. So rather than try to go the health and safety route where sometime down the road, we're trying to figure out how it's a major health and safety issue to allow this charging station where it shouldn't be. And coming up with findings that are really bogus and trying to backhandedly disallow something that should have never been authorized. I don't like that. If we say it's okay in every zoning district, when somebody comes in here to the board and is going to put a charging station in downtown Weaverville in a residential district, they're going to get my vote because we said that's what's allowed. And we don't get to try to underhandedly behind the scenes tweak the rules and find a way to not allow something. That's not how it works. We either have to do it right or we have to allow it. And that's, I struggle with that.
So what is your recommendation that we should do with this ordinance?
My recommendation, I brought up at the our last board meeting or one of the previous meetings, I say, yes, we allow private E V charging stations in any zoning district. That's fine. And commercial E V zone and expedited in any zoning that would allow for a regular gas station. Because it's the same thing.
And I, I do have a question. So Skylar, I'm wondering clearly this is all about streamlining and, and once, once it's clear where it is appropriate to be done, that it happens quickly, right? That's the main focus of this. Is there anything about what supervisor Frazier is suggesting that is counter to what the expectation of this ordinance is supposed to be? Is defining where it can and can't be a problem or to the, to a way that the ordinance is supposed to be drafted? I wouldn't think so, but I just want to make sure.
So something that helped me kind of get an idea of where the state wanted us to be, and I believe it's one of the attachments, is the electric vehicle charging station permit streamlining requirements and best practices. And so that was provided in a guidebook that was drafted by the state in ways that a county or like a local government would be compliant with A B one, two, three, six. Ways that we would be consistent and going above and beyond to be compliant type of thing. And then they also, the state also prepared a table of actions that a local jurisdiction could perform that would not be consistent with A B one, two, three, six. And so in that kind of list of non consistent, non best practices includes examples such as making it a discretionary permit or for certain charging stations such as fueling station or say stating that a charging station is a fueling station requiring additional zoning review. So those are like examples within the not best practices. You're like, what, what's it? Not compliant. So those are their not compliant examples. So that's what I've been drawing from when I'm kind of formulating the discussion for you of what I'm seeing from the state. But it's kind of hard to know, like, in the same way of the direction that we've gotten from county council so far, it's really hard to know how far we can push the envelope on it.
May I speak?
Mm hmm, yeah.
So I'm, I'm, I'm almost one hundred percent in alignment with supervisor Frazier with the single exception that gas stations in terms of their environmental risk and, and what has to be done underground are a little bit more obviously takes more work to, to have one there. So what, so my thoughts are, I agree that that an individual person should be able to put a charging station in their home or their own car or for their family. Wherever their home is, that's totally fine with me. And I am in agreement that it should be as far as commercial charging stations, they need to be where commercial activity takes place. One of my concerns is that say there's a, a new cul de sac or we have a cul de sac and there's a vacant lot and someone says buys it and, or they own it and they say, well, I'm going to put in five charging stations right here. You're, you have, we will have people lingering in that area that maybe shouldn't be in that, in that area and the traffic and just the opportunities for people to sit stagnant in a place for an extended period of time while their, their cars charge. So I just think that it would be very wise of us to, to say that commercial charging stations need to be in commercial areas. Maybe not just where a gas station can be, but they need to be in public, in a public space. And then I'm completely fine with people having their own individual ones, you know, in, in their homes. But it just concerns me that we, I agree. I, I, one of my personal policies is I don't like to adopt stuff and then try to fix it later because it never works out. We always, and I, I've never experienced it working out, so those are my thoughts.
So I, I have a comment. I, I agree with Dan ninety, ninety percent of it, except for the, the gas station thing, which I do own a gas station. And I would never have one of these things at my gas station. And I own the surrounding parcels and I would never want one there. You don't want people hanging out for half hour or forty minutes. It's I don't even know what you have to go through to get it near your gas pumps and all that, so I I don't, I don't know anybody that would want one at their gas station. You know, I think most of the gas stations in town probably have a hard enough time keeping people moving along. So for that reason, I, you know, I agree on everything else. So I just, the gas station thing and being an owner of a gas station and the parcels around it. Yeah, I don't want people hanging around.
I, I wasn't saying you need to have it at the gas stations, but it should be in the same type zoning. It needs to be in basically in highway commercial to me or, or at least some kind of commercial setting. It's not, a commercial E V charging station is not something that you should put in residential area. I mean, I don't, the state apparently doesn't care about land use and planning when they came up with this. It was, they just need they're mandating that we have E Vs and they don't have the infrastructure, so they're trying to make it easier to do it. Okay, I get that. But it doesn't fit and if, if we do pass this ordinance exactly how it is, probably still, we're not going to have fourteen E V charging stations pop up in Trinity County. But just the idea that we do something we know is wrong doesn't set well with me. It, it's, it's not right. It's just not good planning. I'll leave it at that. And I, I do think, I mean, as far as allowing, okay, if we allow it in commercial zone, parcels, whatever, I'm, it just, it can't be in residential areas. It can't be in open space. It can't be in T P Z. It can't be on A P land. I mean, there, it can't fit. How can you say that a commercial E V charging station fits on A P land? It that's why I sorry, I'm frustrated. I wish the planning commission would have had this conversation, but it's just and it's going to, it's really tough for us to go through. I mean, I don't see a lot of us having Trinity County zoning ordinance with this to go through the zoning and see where it fits. But it's just
Okay, so if we're, we've already tried the planning commission route and that wasn't fruitful. Tasking Skylar to go through a whole ordinance and figure it out doesn't seem wise to me or not something I want to do to her workload. So what, how do you feel about being an ad hoc of one or picking your partner? And, and you take on that task of creating it, how you would like to see it?
I would be if we could do it in general terms, I think we could do it today. And it's, I don't, Skylar would have to jump in there and see, because I don't know exactly what commercial zonings. We have C one, C two, C three, highway, commercial, industrial, all those zonings. I don't know what it would fit in with. what it would fit in with, but those are the kind of things that we should do.
We'd also want to look at the statute and see how much we could restrict it and whether we could restrict certain areas or not.
Well, and according to the statute, I don't think we can. But at the same time, I don't think the state has the authority to tell us that we can't because we have zoning authority in our county. We, so because they made a statute that says that they can tell us we can't do what we get to do, doesn't make it right. And we've had the discussion with Margaret. It's like, yep, we don't have a leg to stand on. They took that out. It still isn't going to work. So, uh, because the state says we don't have the authority, we either have to take that authority our own self, or
Okay, so let's just have this one conversation. Let's look at this from a perspective of pros and cons. Um, if we put this forward and, and sign it off and get it done, we're out from under the hammer, potential hammer of the state. If we don't and we delay, or we change it in ways that the state has said, it wasn't supposed to look like that, now we have potential risks. So there's risk on both sides that somebody's gonna bring forward something and want to put it, you know, egregiously in an area where it doesn't seem appropriate and it bothers them. So let's have the, let's have the level of risk conversation.
Probably less likely to have somebody put an EV station in than to be out of compliance with this. I mean, I don't see where the state really, what, what are they going to do to us? If nobody's applying. Um, so the, the level of risk either way comes from if somebody decides they want an EV charging station. Because if nobody applies, what does it matter if we have a streamlining process?
Okay, so let's ask this question. Let's say that we changed up this ordinance the way we wish to see it. And somebody comes with an application and says, your ordinance doesn't allow me to do the thing I wanted to do because of the way you changed it, but the state ordered you to do it in the way that I want to be able to do it. I'm gonna ask council, what you see as the leg, they, that applicant, this would stand on?
Yes, they could bring that sort of claim. Yeah, the state law supersedes the county law. And if they structured it that way, then we would be subject to a suit potentially, yeah.
And, and just so I'm clear, we believe that the way the state statute is written, it prohibits us from identifying zones where it can and can't be done.
I don't know that. As I say here now, I could research it and, and figure that out. But it sounds like, no, it sounds like it's applicable to all areas. And then the health and safety is sort of the thing that sort of stops up.
I, I hear, get it done right. I hear, have it the way you want it so that when somebody comes forward, what goes forward is what we all wish would happen. I'm just still taking the low risk route. I'm not into us having to pay out more money for somebody who said, you know, you didn't do what you were told to do. And I guess what's really troublesome is that we were asked to start this conversation and figure these things out back when approaching legislators about the fact that we don't like what the state is ordering. You know, may have had time and been able to create some momentum to make a difference. Why that didn't happen, who knows? We can't fix the past, but here we are.
Just still following up on, I'm just trying to get clarification. Skylar, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm still here.
Okay, so I, I know I asked this question before and you gave me an answer and I'm still not clear. Sounds like county council would have to look deeper and I know you're not a lawyer. But is your understanding that we are prohibited from defining which types of parcels are appropriate? Because we can still have a very streamlined process. It's just on these 500 parcels that we've identified it's possible to do it on. And then it's streamlined. So I don't understand, I don't understand, does the state really say? Just do exactly what we say and it could go anywhere, including we'll put it on the edge of the river and we don't really care because it's not environment, you know, it's not safe and healthy. Does it really prohibit us from doing any zoning whatsoever? I can't believe it does.
So there isn't any language that I found that like explicitly says really anything about zoning. Doesn't say you can't, like, within, like, the assembly bills specifically. But, um, so that's what has encouraged me to try to find as much literature published by various state offices as I can regarding, um, electric vehicle charging stations and these assembly bills to see like what the general feel is, I guess. And based on that, it seems like it's very discouraged to review these permits based on zoning. The interesting thing about it is generally electric vehicle charging stations are encouraged to be seen accessory to all uses. And that's kind of like where the parking lot aspect of it comes to, like the parking spaces. If electric vehicle charging stations are seen as accessory to like all parking and parking is generally allowed in like almost every zone district. I think that's kind of like where it, one way that it kind of fits everywhere.
And, and just because you were there for the planning commission discussion, you said they felt it was fine in all zones, all types of zones. Did they have a discussion like we're having?
No, I was on the line and I didn't see that, not too much.
Yeah, it did not get as deep as we were going, for sure.
It, it wasn't this long of a discussion.
And then, but it was just a general statement that was made, we don't see any need to limit by zoning.
So we had a discussion, um, I drew, I drew out each zoning district, what their, what each zoning district's general description and intent was. Um, if the general description was vague, it included what the use by right, what the uses by right are for those different zoning districts. And so that was available for the planning commissions for review. And so based on the review of the staff report and the presentation provided in the discussion they had afterwards, that's when they made the determination, or I guess they made their recommendation to you, that all zoning districts are consistent.
Well, uh, back to what you said, Chair, I think when I consider the risks, I, I think it, we have, to me, two options. One is we approve it and we ask for work to immediately begin to revise it so that it more accurately reflects what we think is appropriate. And then we're at risk of somebody jumps in in the meantime and says, great, I'll put it there. And you can't stop me because that's the way the ordinance reads right now. The other way would be, we say, we're just gonna put this off again and be even further behind the deadline. Um, and put it all in place the first time and we run the risk of somebody saying, you don't have the ordinance in place you're supposed to. So whatever actions could be taken against us for that versus the action of it being put in someplace where we don't think it should be. But those are the only two options to me. We can't just, to me, we can't just say, okay, let's go forward with this because it's hard to fix. We, we have to get it fixed. It's just a matter of, do you do it in two stages or one, to me?
Like, I have a question. Is there any way that we can look at this and like Supervisor Fraser said, just say, we, we approve the, the ability for, for personal charging stations to be in any zoning that has, you know, homes or whatever on it. And then, and then we say, but commercial must be within a commercial zoning. Within commercial zoning. Can we do that?
Counsel, can we do that?
Yeah, you can tailor it as you wish. Again, I don't know if it comports with the state requirements, but yes, you are free to do that.
And if we were to make changes in the moment, would we be able to pass this today or this has to come back to another reading?
No, you can, you can make those changes now. Yeah. And then it will, it comes back to a second reading regardless.
Okay.
But we wouldn't have to send it back to the planning commission because they had their shot.
Sure. Um, I have another question for you. Can you define exactly what it is that would be bothersome that you picture could result from a commercial installation in a non-commercial zone? Is it, is it light? Is it, um, the, the ability of people to linger?
It, the biggest issue I would have, well, it, it depends. We've had these issues come up in the past, but one of the biggest things you hear is traffic. Um, I know that if you did have people just hanging out for a half an hour or so to charge their car in the residential area, that would become an issue. But the other thing is, why this commercial activity? If we're going to allow this commercial activity in any zoning district, and I brought it up before, why don't we allow a cannabis dispensary in any zoning district? Why don't we allow a store in any zoning district? It's, you, you can't pick and choose the winners. If you allow commercial, you allow commercial. And that's just how I work. The only other question I would have for counsel and possibly it's a third option and it's a terrible one. If we pass this and then we had our next meeting have, pass an ordinance that says it is a detriment to health and safety to have an EV charging station in these zoning districts, will that stand up? Can we determine that a zoning district creates a health and safety issue?
I've never heard of that before.
Could you do it?
I would think you would want to have them all together. Theoretically, I guess you could.
Because to me, if you allowed somebody to stand around waiting for their char, car to charge for 30 to 45 minutes in a residential district, that creates a safety issue. We don't know who they are. We don't know if they're gonna go rob houses while they're there. Or if we have these giant electric car charging stations in residential areas, we don't, the health issue could be, well, we don't know who's gonna be tampering with that electricity. So I mean, it, I think it's a terrible idea, but we have to come up with a way to say, we're not going to allow this where it shouldn't be allowed. And if the state's going to handcuff us, then we'll have to find a way to work around it. Because quite frankly, I don't think the state has any authority to tell us we can't limit what's allowed in our zoning. That's our authority. So.
I would, yeah, I would be surprised if there wasn't some sort of way of addressing that. I don't, a- again, I would have to look at the statute and look at the rules around that to figure that out. But that does, yeah, makes sense that you can sort of govern your, your zoning regulations as you would as the local government. But it would take some research to do that.
And Skylar, just for, since we're already here and it's after lunch, could you, could you read us some of the use by right from, do you have that zoning ordinance for, for commercials uses? Um, like for a C1, C2, just use by rights on those, uh, commercials and industrial zones?
Yeah, um, okay. So starting with retail commercials, that's C1. Principally permitted uses include, do you want me to just rattle all of them off?
Sure, you're quick.
We got general office, retail sales and services conducted within a building, daycare center for less than 12 children, rest home, restaurant without drive-through service, financial institution without drive-through service, bed and breakfast in, and other uses found to be similar by the planning commission. Would you like me to go through all the?
Do C2 and C3 also, the use by right.
So for C2, general commercial, it is adult day support centers licensed by the state, general office, retail sales and services conducted within a building, restaurant without drive-through service, bed and breakfast in, bar, laundromat when hooked up to a community sewer, rest home, auto service station, uh, auto repair shop, car wash, parking lot, secondhand sale store, undertaking establishment, theater, mini storage when all storage is within a building, recycling when completely enclosed in a building, hotel or motel of 10 units or less hooked up to a community sewer system and other uses determined by the planning commission. And for highway commercial, the HC district, we have convenience food store with or without petroleum sales, restaurant without drive-through service, auto service station, hotel or motel with 10 units or less or, or, and hooked up to a community sewer system. Uh, general office, retail stores and services when in addition to other highway commercial uses, recycling center when indoors, church and other uses determined by planning commission. And for C3, which is heavy commercial, we have warehouse, mini storage, cabinet shop, commercial services, metal fabrication, welding shop, wholesale, wholesale sales and storage and auto repair shop.
What about open space?
Use for right in open space is fairly limited.
Okay, so for the open space or OS district, we have the management of land and forest for the production and harvest of trees, including tree farming, habitat enhancement or improvement projects as approved by CDFW or other state or federal agency, pasture or grazing lands or other uses found to be similar by the planning commission.
An EV charging station's hard to graze. I was just trying to, I'm trying to keep track of all those in my brain, but I believe we only have two zoning districts. Only one. Highway commercial is the only one that you mentioned use by right of petroleum stations, isn't it? That's the only zoning district that is allowed use by right for gas stations. If I remember hearing you correctly. It's highway commercial.
I'm double checking, but that, I believe that is correct, yes. Here, I can double check industrial. Yes, I think it's just highway commercial.
So I mean, that's kind of what I was getting at with that is there is nothing that is allowed by right in every single zoning district. Why is this so much different? I think that, I mean, I wouldn't have a problem allowing it in all commercial zoning. Uh, I would just because it's frustrating, but at the same time, at least that's getting it out of there's some zoning districts that are so restrictive that this just is crazy. I mean, when I was on the planning commission, we had conversations way lengthier than this regarding cannabis and whether even cannabis should be allowed on AP zoning. People are getting tax incentives because that's in AP zone. And then they're doing commercial stuff that doesn't fit. So, I mean, there are conversations that have to be had. Uh, I agree with Chair Cox. This, um, would have been nice if we would have had it in 2017 or whenever this came down. I could have had this discussion at the planning commission level if everything would have been moving as it should have. But at the same time, we I can't support just saying, yeah, let's allow EV charging stations expedited in any zoning in Trinity County. I can't do it.
So my, my risk factor kind of changes in my mind too, because if we pass something that says, okay, we'll allow personal use in any zone, this is what you're saying, right? And we're only gonna allow commercial installation in a commercial zone.
Seems to make sense.
Right? And we streamline the process for both. What really can the state come in and pound us for?
Allowing it in improper zoning. And if they do that, that's where we have county council to back us up in court and make them prove that they have the ability to tell us we have to allow commercial use in our.
I just don't see us being the target of useful time.
I would hope not.
So, so Dan, would you, although it's not your optimum result, would you be good with, uh, commercial 1, 2, and 3, highway commercial 1, 2, and 3? Just to.
Well, I, I would be okay with allowing commercial. The, my, one of my biggest problems is it seems like there's no, there's nothing in this that separates private use EV charging stations from commercial EV charging stations. Yes, private should be allowed anywhere that, well, not anywhere, because we have zoning districts that housing is not allowed as a use by right. OS doesn't allow housing. So, um, I would say private EV charging station should be allowed anywhere and can private EV charging station should be allowed anywhere in conjunction with a house and commercial EV charging stations could be allowed in commercial zoning and yeah, I would think that would be okay.
Okay.
I was just saying, the only thing I would, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, you can.
Do you want to say house or housing?
Well, I would.
Apartment buildings.
Yeah, um, with, yeah, I'm fine with that.
I'm just trying to think of one other circumstance. Is there, is there a scenario where I privately want to put in a business on, like I'm looking at heavy commercial? And I have a, um, I just had it here. I've got anything. I've got a, a convenience food store with or without petroleum sales. I've got a restaurant with drive-through service and I want to have a private station there for myself, for my staff, you know, to be able to have that convenience charger car.
Well, I, I, I don't have a problem with allowing personal, not private, personal use EV charging stations because that commercial one is going to be privately owned, so it would have to be personal, not private. But I don't even care if you allow that in open space if it's in conjunction with a use that's required. If somebody has a EV charging station in their open space because they went and bought a four hundred thousand dollar electric tractor, um, to use in their grazing operation. That's, but it's the commercial aspect that's the biggest issue with me. It's.
So how do we word it?
In, in looking at the state, uh, statute, it says, review of an application to install an electric vehicle charging station of hydrogen fueling stations shall be limited to the building officials review of whether it meets all health and safety requirements of local, state and federal law. So it does include local. So I think the idea here is to streamline the process, not to limit the local government's ability to
But that only, that's only for health and safety. And it's like, it, it's health and safety code, not zoning code.
I think he's agreeing with.
I'm agreeing with what you're saying in the sense that the idea is that it's a ministerial review and it's streamlined. So if you, the, the ordinance needs to set those parameters out specifically, if they meet those requirements, you issue the license or the permit, right? That said, you can set the local rules as you wish. So what, but once you set them, then you can't, uh, make it non-streamlined.
Yeah, but I have a problem with streamlining. I just think that we need to and I, I'll try to make a motion, but it's gonna fall on Skylar's lap to try to interpret it probably.
One question to council before we do that. If they take their best stab at this right now, we consider this our first reading. If in the next two weeks they go, oh, man, we missed, you know, two things we wish we would have said it differently. Can we change it then and still finish our second reading at the next meeting?
If it's.
Uh, no, I don't believe so. It needs to be read and sit as it exists interim period so that it can be reviewed and, you know, the public can look at it and see what's.
Another question. If we say, okay, Dan, I want you and whomever work with council, figure out how, work with Skylar for how this ought to look. Because we're past a deadline, could this constitute the need for a special meeting to get it done more quickly without having two weeks?
Generally, you don't do ordinances with special meetings. Um, and I would support the taking this back and figuring out exactly as exactly as we wanted before formalizing it and putting it in place. Local governments that don't have this in place that are rural and we're not the only one.
Okay, good to know. Okay, so with that, I'm gonna have this suggestion. I would like to remove my motion from the table and, um, ask for a board consensus that we direct that Dan and, uh, Skylar work with council to create this as you would like to see it and bring it back on March seventh.
I'm tempted to try to make a stab at it, but.
Go ahead and do it today, you mean?
Yeah, but.
I'm not comfortable with taking a stab and I want it right.
Well, I, I do too, but if we, my thinking on it is if we get it right, we save two weeks. If we get it wrong, it takes the same amount of time as if we go.
Actually.
Because we would have to have a second, second reading. So I'm, I think, I'm trying to read through the ordinance to see if there's a way that I can.
Oh, okay.
That, that I can
You're in the ordinance.
Actually give language that would make it. I don't know, um, Skylar, you might be able to help me out with this. Where could we stick in your ordinance, language that would restrict the zoning? I'm not, there's nothing in here that restricts zoning, so it's hard to amend it.
I'm, I'm also looking around. Um, one place we could potentially put it is in, um, fifteen forty, which is permit application processing. I see that there's already language. Um, speaking about the health and safety review about, um, the checklist, maybe we could add another like a D and a E to speak to the commercial and, um, personal charging stations.
And I personally keep things simple. Um, I would say if we added D under fifteen XX point four that said, um, commercial EV charging stations will be expedited in zoning that allows for commercial activity. So that could be, and if you want to list them out, that would be C1, C2, C3, HC and industrial. If that sounds correct to you, then I wouldn't put anything in there about personal because it's covered in the fact that it's already in the rest of it and there's no restrictions. So if that makes sense to you, Skylar.
So just to make sure that I have it, so commercial electric vehicle charging station permits will be expedited in commercial zoning districts such as C1, C2, C3, HC and I. But prohibited in all other districts?
Well, I wouldn't say prohibited. I'd just say that
Okay.
That, that they are not gonna be streamlined. They're gonna have to go through the CUP process in all those other zoning districts, just like they would if they weren't streamlined.
You remember what you just said?
Okay, yeah, uh, so if, if Skylar understands that, I would make a motion that we, uh, approve our EV charging station draft ordinance as amended and move forward from there. Oh, and that we adopt the SEQA finding that this is categorically exempt because of I think, is that all we needed? I'm lost in the ordinance, so.
I'll second that.
Okay, nice work. So we have a motion by Supervisor Fraser. Do we want to read that back? We could have Skylar read that back.
I'll do my best and Skylar can.
Okay.
Approve as amended with commercial EV station permits will be expedited in zoning C1, C2, C3, HC and I. All others will be streamlined, will be under the regular.
CUP process.
CUP process and adopt the SEQA finding.
You good with that?
All right, and that's this.
Can I just say, Ashley, the only other clarification is maybe to make sure that that, which section that's under that fifteen XX dot four O and this would be?
D.
D, just so you have that in your notes. I'm sure Skylar can work with you on it, but just so we have it clear here.
Skylar, can you email me how you're going to write that in the ordinance for the minute?
Yes. Do, did we want to say subject to CUP or discretionary review?
I'm okay with however you think is in your professional opinion to address it. Uh, but as long as we, we're addressing our main concern that there's going to be some review in residential areas and the like.
Okay.
Which way do you think, Skylar?
Um, well typically when we say CUP, it's go into planning commission, but if we said discretionary review, then it might be open to either being through director approval or through planning commission approval.
Well, for all the zonings that aren't mentioned, I would say go ahead and put the CUP language in there.
Okay.
I have it. You guys want me to read the motion again?
Sure.
Approve as amended to, is it the D first? D fifteen XX point four.
No, it's fifteen.
Fifteen.
XX.
XX.
Point four zero.
D. Commercial EV station permits will be expedited in zoning C1, C2, C3, HC and I. All others will go through the CUP process and adopting the SEQA finding. Supervisor Luke Wyler?
Um, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. I was just trying to think in my mind if there's a difference between expediting something and streamlining it, because does expedition mean that this comes above anything else that may be in order in the planning department at that time?
I think we should use streamlining because that's the whole language in the.
Skylar, does that make sense on your end too?
Oh, yeah, I've, I've honestly, I've been using the two interchangeably, but I, I think it would be good to use one consistent, consistent term.
Okay, so if you could grab streamlining for this. Now, you may pull the board. You don't have to read it again, we're good.
Supervisor Luke Wyler?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye. At this point, here's what we're gonna do. We are going to give our staff a one-hour lunch break. We are going to utilize this time to, um, get some closed session out of the way as best as we can because we have two supervisors that need to make their way through a services, transportation advisory council and, um, uh, Supervisors Luke Wyler or Carpenter Harris, do either of you have an interest in this where you would like to participate?
I could change mine.
Okay. Okay, um, and Supervisor Fraser, can you give us an indication of what other, uh, committees? The subject matter of their considerations best align with? I don't really know what they do.
I, yeah, I'm trying to remember. It's one of the, I think this is one of those things where I haven't been involved in a whole lot of meetings. So, um, I can't help you out much there. I think that, uh, yeah, go ahead.
Not a group that meets, um, very often quarterly at best. Um, Department of Transportation oversees this committee and it has to do with just, um, the everything to do with the transit and ride circulation in the county and being able to offer the services to impoverished persons.
All right, um, actually, I think I'm supposed to open this item up for public comment. Um, so I'm gonna do that now. Do we have any public comment on item five point one?
I have no raised hands.
Okay, and there is literally no one in the room, so I'll close public comment, bring it back to the board and, uh, Supervisor Carpenter Harris said she's willing to serve as the second primary supervisor Gogan will remain as an alternate.
And hopefully they send us an email when they have a meeting scheduled because I didn't even realize I was still the primary, although.
Okay. Item five point two, grand jury report, board of supervisors' response. Uh, the requested action is approve the board's response to the grand jury report, DER twenty twenty-two zero zero one abandoned vehicle abatement report. So I created this report and the way that I bring it forward, well, let's see, I guess if anything, um, you've seen the backup data. I start with if the, if there are questions of any of the supervisors.
As we go through five two, I guess five three, Jill?
So just general questions right now, not a deep dive into discussion. Okay, then I'll open this up for public comment. Is there anyone on Zoom wishing to make comment?
I have no raised hands, no shots.
I'm talking to my.
You're okay, okay. All right, so we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. All right. So, uh, the findings, there were only three findings that we were required to respond to. Four, six and eight. And I listed them there. Due to the ABA program self-funding capability without using general funds, there's currently no routine annual evaluation of the abandoned vehicle payment program by the board of supervisors or oversight by any board or community stakeholders. The Clean California Grant is available to supplement the program, but Trinity County has no funding for the request and administration of this grant opportunity. And there is a lack of information available in the media or on the county website for Trinity County residents to report an abandoned vehicle or illegally abate and advantage, an abandoned vehicle on their property. And, um, to me, I responded that I, I would agree with those findings. So, um, board members can weigh in on one or all three of those. My agreement?
Yes.
Okay. All right, moving on to the recommendations. Uh, to me and in discussion with our interim CAO, um, it does seem unreasonable for a ten-week interim CAO to make a programmatic decision of ongoing outcomes on behalf of an incoming CAO. And so my recommendation is that all five of the grand jury's recommendations would be evaluated for program development by our incoming CEO Trent Tittle and returned. We are offered six months to make that happen, so that would need to be completed um, no later than June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Any discussion on that? So it would need to be, um, I don't know how that works. Counsel, can you advise? I'm not exactly sure. Does this, if we move this forward today, are we saying that the a program would be developed or recommendations brought back by the CAO? And would that need to be a couple of meetings prior to our, uh, kind of due date of June twenty-second? Or how does that typically work?
Sorry, is the question just what are you?
It's a process question with regard to grand jury where we're saying we don't have capacity. Their, their recommendations are certainly, uh, founded and it really requires some program development. Which an interim CAO really does not have capacity to do and such a limited, uh, timeframe. So what my, uh, response was is that because this is unreasonable to ask of an interim, we have six months to complete some kind of program development that we would then bring back to satisfy the grand jury's request. That due date, given six months, would be June twenty-second. But should we look at the calendar of board date, board meetings? And pick a date certain that this would be completed by four consideration by the board?
Um, and that's all, I think that's all you're required to do is, is establish what you're going to be, or that you're going to, a parameter to what you're gonna further analyze and that the board will have it for consideration on this date because we can't say that we're gonna pass something. So, uh, if you, if somebody makes a motion that we're going to direct staff to further analyze these and present something to the board by June twenty-second, we've already basically. June twenty second, we've already basically taken the action required as of the time we give that direction and, and set, establish a timeline and direction. That's, that's what we have to do.
Okay, so um.
The two meetings in June are June sixth and June twentieth.
Do you want the May date?
I would say we could do no later than June sixth. We could perhaps state it that way. That gives us the June twentieth date for any further consideration.
Well, as long as you have it on the agenda, we can, we'll take some kind of action on it, whatever day it's there. So you can, if, you can do six or twenty.
Let's do no later than June sixth. Um, and this motion um when we say staff, we don't have to define who all that includes.
Well, you can.
This is direction to CAO.
Yeah, you can uh, it'd be, we'll give direction to the new CAO when he gets here and then he'll be the one in charge.
About two months, right? He comes in April sometime.
So he's gonna have to hop and pop.
Okay. Alright. So um Dan, do you want to go ahead and put that into a motion?
Let me see. I will make a motion that we like, oh, I gotta get back to my agenda because we're actually approving your response, correct?
Correct.
And providing direction to staff to go ahead, Rick, because I just lost my.
So basically all we're doing is we're, we're approving as presented except altering my date, return to no later than June twenty second. So we're approving with an altered date of no later than June sixth.
Okay, so I think you just made a motion yourself. I will second it.
Alright.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Luke Wyler?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
And then Ashley, in your magic notebook of things to not be forgotten, can we make a, a note here that this is something that our incoming CAO needs to be well briefed on timely? Alright, moving to item five point three, and as we do so, we are going to trade our general counsel for our in-house uh counsel, our district attorney, David Brady. And um, and so we will um remove what we hope would not be an uncomfortable situation for you, Mr. Cameron.
Sure.
Alright. And thank you, Mr. Brady, for giving us some of your very precious time. Appreciate it. Alright, item five point three, grand jury report, Board of Supervisors' requested action, approve the board's response to the grand jury report. J U R two zero two two dash zero zero one, county council review. And um I'm going to, since this report was prepared. Actually, let's see, let's start this way. Um, are there any general questions for clarity by any board members before we open this to public comment? Okay. Is there any public comment on this item? Keith? Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good afternoon, supervisors and Madam Chair. Um, my main concern today, uh, of course, you all all know that I've had problems with this grand jury report for a long time. And I want to commend Dan on his answering. But uh some of the findings here, I think uh there's one in finding one, I think uh Dan, you missed something here. Finding one, a series of county ordinances enacted to regulate CCLs from sixteen to twenty one consistently failed to comply with SEQA requirements. That is absolutely not true. Uh, every county ordinance complied with SEQA was vetted through the Planning Commission and vetted through the supervisors with finding the facts and in uh compliance with SEQA. So I would respectfully request you change that to a wholeheartedly disagree. I'll run out of time here if I go into all the problems with this, but on number three, I'll say uh they stayed part of the twenty one court order in the TAA case was to cease and this is, to cease from issuing and reissuing CCLs. They failed to mention that as part of the twenty twenty, twenty nineteen case that it was only for issuing new licenses and not reissuing. So this whole lawsuit, I think it's uh important to remember is over less than about fifteen new uh licenses that the county uh made a mistake and, and issue. Uh, what else do I have here? Uh, a-again, I wholeheartedly that use, hope that this is used uh for the future um boards or uh general um grand juries to look at of how not to do. One, uh, uh very few, if any, uh of the players were uh talked about or talked to in this and you can tell in their responses that are in the findings that they're just really out of line and sort of embarrassing what they've, what they've done here. Um, and again, uh Dan, I appreciate you're going through. There's, I could go into a bunch more little stuff, but uh I lost that privilege. So I would just really appreciate that, that you correct uh finding number one. And uh at least for the record, we know that the county did do its due diligence, did follow SEQA and did do the ordinances. Otherwise uh people would have had ninety days to appeal all those and I'm sure that would have been the appeal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I have no other raised hands, no any chaps.
Okay, with that, we will close public comment and bring it back to the board. So um I think what we will do is take each one of these and um open it up to board comments in order. So on finding number one. A series of county ordinances enacted to regulate CCLs from sixteen to twenty one consistently failed to comply with SEQA requirements to identify and mitigate for the full range of environmental impacts associated with commercial cannabis cultivation. The Board of Supervisors during that period relied on the current county council for legal guidance. Um, so supervisor Fraser, I'll start with you. Your original response was to agree and any comments?
Yeah, well, first off, I want to make it clear that um we're not even required to respond to all these findings. Uh, I responded to the findings on my own. They asked for a response to their request. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay, thank you.
To begin with.
Okay.
But finding number one is I did struggle with because the county did play by the rules. The issue I had here is the failure to comply with SEQA. Um, the state didn't comply with SEQA. They said there was no need. There's a difference also between the program complying with SEQA and the ordinances complying with SEQA. And so I kind of punted on the, on finding number one. So um I al, I was thinking about just erasing it, but then I thought, well, that would look funny if I only started responding with ones I disagreed with wholly. So number one is a punt. Um, I don't think that the county did anything wrong in the way that we did our ordinances. I don't necessarily agree that the ordinances took into account all the SEQA aspects because the state didn't require it at that time. The state punted on SEQA. That's their prerogative. So that's what I had with finding number one. I don't really wholly agree with it, but I do agree that we did have the same county council and I do agree that there were issues, but we did follow the rules when we created those ordinances.
So you're more comfortable with somewhat agree?
Yeah, I s- or somewhat disagree. I pretty much disagreed with most stuff in this grand jury report. Well, uh, uh, like I said, nu, number one's a punt because I didn't even, I almost didn't respond to it at all. But you did, same with number two. I wasn't going to uh respond to number two either because it's like.
Okay, let's stick with number one for just a second. I think that the, I think that the operative word here in this finding is ordinances. And again, I didn't serve during the enactment of those ordinances, but what we've seen come before us makes the ordinance exempt from SEQA because the project will need to comply with SEQA. So the question is, was the ordinance the project or were the sites the project?
And the ordinances, as far as I'm concerned, the ordinances were compliant with SEQA. Um, the projects for the first, I don't know how many years we dealt with cannabis. We heard constantly from public comment and from people involved looking at it at the state level that it's SEQA deferred and SEQA this, we're gonna deal with SEQA in July. You know, there was always, the state never would give us a date for SEQA compliance and then we could get into a big giant discussion on SEQA. How do you go back and do SEQA on an existing project which all of our ordinances are crafted around allowing or taking existing grows and making them licensed? So SEQA is kind of out the window if you already have a project. So uh that's what I punted on number one. You can erase it from the whole response would be what I would really like to do. Is not even respond to it.
Based on the fact that we're not.
They didn't ask us to respond to their findings.
Okay. Then I would say if we weren't asked to respond to the findings, maybe we just remove all the findings and responses.
The problem I have with that is some of these findings are, your findings are supposed to be findings of fact. And I don't know a polite way to say it. Some of these are findings of fiction.
Okay.
So um there are some that ha, I think have to be responded to. Um, number one, number two.
Oh, I'm sorry, just to say, so do you want to just say no response?
To, on finding number one, I'm fine.
You don't want to get, if, if there's not a requirement, but there are some we want to respond to. Perhaps it's no response to the ones that we don't feel like we need to weigh in on because there's whatever reason.
I'm okay with that. It's, I just, like I said, the reason I didn't just erase number, finding number one and finding number two from this whole thing was because I, it's like I don't want it to just look like I only responded to stuff I disagree with. And I don't really remember what finding two is, but we'll get to that in a minute.
So I think if anything, I, I don't like kicking something out just to kick it out. I think that what we are saying here is that there is some there isn't clarity with what exactly this statement means as presented. And, and so to say, I feel more comfortable with somewhat disagrees. I'm trying to find our options and the way this is laid out becomes difficult to see them. Um to just say, well, I'm not going to respond to some, but I'm going to respond to the others.
Well, that's why I, I didn't just erase it.
Exactly.
But uh, I mean, I, I could wholly disagree and I could give a perfectly logical explanation why. But I don't know exactly what their finding is saying is my, the biggest issue. It's like we had a settlement that said we didn't comply with SEQA, but our ordinances. So we have a, you know, it's like, how do you say we did comply with SEQA? That's what I feel happened. But at the same time, we had a judgment that said we didn't. So personally, I wholly disagree with that statement. But there's a judgment that says we didn't, we did not comply with SEQA. But that's also, the judgment says we didn't comply with the settlement agreement. It, that's a difficult thing. It's not clear to me what they're asking.
So I don't really see how we can sit here as a board and say that we disagree with what a um, is it superior court? That where we went?
I can disagree with anybody I want to.
Sure.
You may. I think that, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I, I think that, I mean, myself, I, you know, I, sure, I can disagree with everybody and sometimes I do. But if this got to the level that it did, I think we owe a response, whether it be agree, disagree, partially agree, wholly don't agree. But as a board, I think this went over our head and we should make a decision on how we feel about this as a board.
Well, and that's what I say. I, this finding was, the reason I punted on it was because it's like okay, they said we, the fi, their finding was that we didn't comply with SEQA. I think personally, I think the court's finding was that we didn't uh comply with a settlement agreement. I think we did everything that we were required to in those ordinances. But I just, I have, I had a hard time right there with saying I wholly disagree when the court kind of said we screwed up. So that, that was.
I, I'm comfortable with agree.
I'm comfortable with agree.
I'm comfortable with agree.
Ready? Okay.
Your punt worked.
Well, then, I'm comfortable as completely erasing that one, but we can move on to.
So um we'll just.
Madam Chair.
We have closed public comment and so we won't be taking public comment at this time. Okay, finding two, failure that county to properly address SEQA resulted in a lawsuit filed by concerned county residents, TAA, seeking to compel compliance. After an initial settlement in which the county paid ninety five thousand dollars in the litigants attorney fees in two thousand nineteen, the county failed to honor the terms of the settlement and ultimately was ordered to pay an additional three hundred thirty nine thousand one hundred eighty five dollars in costs and attorney fees in twenty twenty one. The county, the current county council provided legal guidance to the Board of Supervisors throughout this period and the response was agree. So we know that this is what Dan would like it to say. And so Supervisor Luke Weller?
Yes.
Supervisor Gogan?
One more time.
Uh, do you agree with this responsive agree or would you like to see that as something else?
I agree.
And Supervisor Carpenter Harris? Okay. We believe that one is a five zero. Finding number three, as a part of the twenty twenty one court order in the TA case, the county was ordered to desist from issuing or reissuing any CCL until SEQA compliance is achieved. Numerous Trinity County farmers found themselves unable to operate legally through no fault of their own and several filed legal action against the county. In addition, numerous cannabis abatement cases against farmers who continued to operate without licenses were filed by the county. Those cases both by the county and against the county have and continue to represent significant additional legal costs to the county. Response was disagree wholly. After the court order in the TAA case, no cannabis cultivators initiated new litigation against Trinity County. Additionally, legal costs associated with notices of violation are the responsibility of the violator to pay. And Supervisor Luke Weller, do you agree with the response provided?
I'm just trying to understand the difference between a finding here that said there were lawsuits and the response that says there were not. So.
There were not. So that's why I disagreed wholly with that is the county, it, well, even setting through closed session, you should have, be able to see that, that there were no new lawsuits by cultivators after that happened. Um, and I looked into that. I reached out to county council for one to see, it's like, hey, what new ones have we had? Um, there, there are no new cases.
From before, is that?
They were all from before. And so that is just an absolutely not factual fact.
So you're comfortable with response? Supervisor Gogan?
My recollection is there was no additional lawsuits, but at that time, so I would uh. My recollection is there was no additional lawsuits, but at that time, so I would, uh, disagree wholly, I guess, or agree with Dan's response.
And Supervisor Carpenter Harris? Okay. Right, finding four, from fiscal year two thousand sixteen seventeen through fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two. The county paid approximately four and a half million dollars in legal costs. This total includes four hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred eighty-five dollars in settlements and award to litigants, ninety-four thousand, six hundred forty-one dollars paid to special counsel retained for the TAA case, and nearly four million dollars paid directly to county council. Response disagreed partially. Two hundred sixteen thousand, two hundred eighty-seven dollars passed through county council to pay other outside council investigations, leaving three point six million dollars being paid to county council over a six-year period or an average of six hundred thousand dollars per fiscal year. And so I would say Supervisor Fraser, since you looked into this so carefully to be able to separate those costs out, could you share with us what your research showed?
Pretty much showed right there.
What's here?
But, uh, and some of that stuff, I don't think we're gonna disclose in a public meeting.
Okay.
What passed through county council, that's privileged. That's why it passed through county council.
Okay.
I'm fine with this.
Okay, I don't have knowledge of those details and so I'm fine with it. Yes? You as well, Cam? Okay. Our finding five, during the period considered herein sixteen to twenty-two, the Board of Supervisors of County Council displayed a tendency to conduct business in secret. The Board of Supervisors failed to consistently report decisions and actions taken in closed session as stipulated in state and county statutes. And county council consistently invoked attorney client privilege to conceal information ranging from services billed to the opinion of special counsel regarding the disposition of the TAA case. Response disagreed partially. The current board has no knowledge of decisions or actions taken in closed session prior to January of two thousand twenty-one, so cannot agree or disagree. Since January of two thousand twenty-one, any actions on the TAA case were voted on in open session and discussion and legal advice leading to those actions are privileged information.
Hold on, I'm just reading this one part again.
Sure. Uh, while he's reading, Supervisor Gogan, do you, um, agree with that response or? Okay, sure.
I, I, I'm okay with this. I think, again, it's, a, a lot of it is caught up in the wording of this specifically. Um, clearly, we, there's members of the board that were here in last year that can speak to what happened in closed session. Um, even though there aren't people that could speak to before those last two years. But this specifically refers to failed to consistently report on things related to the TAA case. And so what I'm hearing from your research and your experience on the board, this is what happened. So I'm, I'm okay with that then.
I would just say that as a member of the public, um, I observed the things that happened during this time period where I did not sit on the board. And as a member of the public, I felt what the grand jury appears to me to be expressing here. And that was that, um, information that was reported out of closed session was repeatedly requested and not provided. Um, and neither was there even a reason given as to why it wasn't being provided. It was simply, um, it, it, it just was not responded to. There was just radio silence. And, and so I, um, I feel this as a, I feel this from the seat of a constituent. And, um, it's troublesome to me.
I was in the same seat as Jill. We both had a, almost a year run up from the time we were voted in to the time we sat here. And I feel the same way as you, as you just said, that, I mean, consistently is a, is, is a term that I don't, you know, what does consistently mean, four to ten, seven out of ten? Um, but I do feel that what you just said, um, was the public perception and also my perception as a constituent, um, in this county.
And I guess I would take the word consistent, and again, it's, it's difficult with semantics because a decision was asked for a report out on more than one occasion. And the response was consistent. There was no response. Um, but to can say, say that consistently meant multiple decisions, then consistently does not apply. So, um.
Chair, can I just ask, so I, I'm, I didn't experience what you're experiencing, so knowing what, you know, obviously sitting on this side of the table and, and being in closed sessions, the things that were being asked for by the public that no response was being given, response should have been given?
In my opinion, yes.
Okay, so should we modify this response to acknowledge that in some fashion?
In my opinion, yes.
Okay.
Mine also.
One of the things I tried to do while I was doing this is not to, um, rely on perception or assumption. I relied on what I knew and what I could find out. Okay, what I know for a fact, since I've been sitting on this board in regards to TAA case, which is expressly called out. We had one vote as this board, that since we did it in open session and anything else that was related to that, all the discussions leading up to that is privileged information. So that's, that was my response. What they did in two thousand sixteen through, before we became a board, I'm not gonna respond to. It doesn't, I can't. I don't know what happened in closed session. I can assume I'm not going to. And that's, um, just, I, this to me is, should only be factual. And it's, it's not easy to respond to something like this when, I mean, seriously, I spent two almost entire days sitting in my office, which is the only time in the history of being a supervisor. I've spent that much time in my office, plus another week or more every morning trying to find out what is fact? What do I know and how do I respond to this? I, I didn't wanna just come out and say, well, I don't agree with you. There has to be a reason. And the only reason I have for saying what I said here is the fact that while I was here, that's what happened. What happened in two thousand sixteen, twenty seventeen? I have no knowledge and I will never have any actual factual knowledge unless somebody was to tell me what happened in closed session and I won't even ask.
So I'm gonna ask a question to council if I may, because I don't remember where I read this. If it's someplace in Brown Act or if it is in our governance manual or covered in Rosenberg's Rules of Order. But there are directives as to how the board is required to come out of closed session. And when a vote has been taken, my recollection is having read that that vote is to be reported out. Can you help me with that?
I believe you're correct.
So in my opinion, what was asked repeatedly in open session and even asked directly by the Trinity Journal of the board at that time, they were asking to know the vote and the vote was not given to them. And in my opinion, that makes me uncomfortable. And as a citizen, it made me quite uncomfortable.
And, and I would just say, Dan, I, I mean, I respect, first of all, thank you for all the work that you put into this to give us facts as you worked hard to recover them. Um, in the end, this is the response from the board, so the board collectively has to feel comfortable, um, in what it says. And I'm in the midst, uh, maybe about thirty percent of the way through the ethics training required for some of the committees I've been assigned to. And one of the things it specifically calls out is, uh, ethics requirements go beyond what's legally required and what is perception. And so I think if we as a board feel that the perception was that we were not, we being the board that some of us weren't on at the time, we're talking about a time we weren't here. But that, but if we, if we wanna just indicate, we understand the importance of transparency and of, uh, following the rules and reading out and, and conveying that information and we're committed to doing that. It doesn't even have to be a backward looking thing, but it could be a forward looking thing if that makes the peo- again, I'm going by not having experience. I wasn't watching the board meetings back then, so I don't know what you're referring to. But hearing you, that seems like something that doesn't try to adjust the facts or say we know facts that we don't, but indication, a sentiment and a commitment to strong ethics going forward.
Hmm.
But, that's up to you.
I would agree with that, and it would seem to me that that would be the intent of a grand jury is to, again, we can't change the past, but they're expressing what they too are uncomfortable with and asking that their board, their governing body would lend to them a degree of transparency they did not feel previously.
So can we say on the bottom of the response, um, henceforth?
Well, the, this is just, these are, these are only findings, so there's no action either. But, um, my question would be, okay, because you said that the perception is that they didn't report out votes or, but do we have any knowledge of that? I mean, do.
How do we not? We were all, unless you weren't following what went on, we were all members of the public at that time, unless we weren't here yet. But if you were here and following it, you have a perception of what happened. You have a public's perception of what happened. You don't have a board member's perception.
We, if we don't have a, we can have a perception, and that's why I, it's not like I wholly disagreed that, I said, I specifically stated that we don't have the knowledge to agree or disagree with what happened with the previous board. Um, you might feel like you have the knowledge to agree or disagree. I don't, because I wasn't setting up here and the perception can be a lot different than the actual fact. So I, I'm not going to assume anything that happened with the previous board. I will answer to what we have done. That, that was my, and I said, I, if you guys don't, aren't comfortable with saying that we can't agree or disagree with what happened with the previous board, um, uh, that's different, I guess, but, um, I don't know how that, there's no way I could find that I know what happened with the previous board. I mean, I, it's just something that I could not do. How can I make that finding? Uh, so my answer was, we have no knowledge of that.
Okay.
My recollection is the public overwhelmingly perception was that we didn't previously report out on, uh, the lawsuit. Um, if we're talking about perception, um, it may be this is something because we sat so long prior to being voted in and then actually sitting up here, we paid a little more attention, I guess. But it was overwhelming that the, the public felt shorted, um, by the, by the board not reporting out. I think it was asked for multiple times at open session and my recollection tells me that there was not a adequate answer given, um, because it seemed to persist for quite a while. So that, that's, um, that's my answer to that.
Hmm. Supervisor Carpenter Harris, you have thoughts?
No.
I think, I, Supervisor Fraser, I totally hear what you're saying and I appreciate the whole heartedness with which you are trying to give deference to conversations to which we were not privy. I really do appreciate that. The other piece that I bring here is that we have, I just wanna, I think if anything, I'll pause here because I'm gonna give these comments at some point anyway. Our system of governance provides for us systems of checks and balances, and I view the grand jury as, as one of those. They are not a small group. It is a large body. And while they may divide to smaller groups to tackle their issues, and I don't have any idea what size or how they, how they do that. Um, when that group comes back, while we five may have no personal firsthand knowledge and they are not directly speaking to the specific five of us, they are speaking to the collective board of supervisors. We five have the ability to hand them the intent of what they are asking. And what I want to hand them is, I hear you. I felt what you are feeling with you. And what I would offer you is my perspective going forward in that I'm doing the best as chair. This year, I see what that feels like to carefully know. What can I say without violating the closed session confidentiality? And, and try to be careful to say all of that.
Well, I.
And I feel like they're deserving of that response from this collective body regardless.
The question I would have for you then, how would you respond to that finding? Um, would you agree? Because then you're saying that we have failed to report out votes that we never took. Or would you partially disagree that we've done everything right? And what happened in the past is not really, we're not privy to that. That, and that's what I said. It's like, okay, things might have happened in the past, but I don't know personally what happened in here. And so I'm not going to put that in a, an official public document that, yep, they screwed up when I don't know it. I do know that we didn't, and that's what my response is. What happened in two thousand sixteen, twenty seventeen is not something that I'm going to respond to. I, I mean, and we also have to go back to the fact that these are findings. This is not their recommendations and how we're supposed to respond to this. These are their findings, and I disagree partially with that finding. The part I disagree with, with that finding is that we have done anything incorrect in our t- dealing with the TAA case, because the only action we took was a vote in public. So we didn't do anything incorrect. And that, that's my disagreement with that finding.
And.
So.
So, Dan, or Supervisor Fraser, what I was hearing is maybe there's nothing to change necessarily about what you put on here, but maybe there's an additional statement that addresses.
Well, I, I don't.
Sentiment perception, is that?
I was merely responding to their findings. And if, if they had an issue that they wanted to, uh, if they had an action requested, they should have put that down in the recommendation section rather than in the finding section. Because what was asked for in the response was only that we respond to the recommendations. The, like I said earlier, the reason I responded to these findings is because in reading them, some of them, some of the findings were not factually accurate. And how can you make a response to the recommendation without addressing the inaccuracy in the findings? Because the inaccuracies in the findings are what lead to the recommendations that are hard to deal with. So, uh, personally, I don't think there's anything wrong with my response that, yeah, uh, we didn't do anything wrong. That's, that's the part I disagreed with, was the fact that it says that this has occurred, well, that says during the two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-two. Or, you know, it's like, we're not, we're not doing that as a board, and that's why I disagreed.
So I guess what I'm gonna do at this point is it is my job to make sure this moves forward and we don't just sit and dwell. And I could completely empathize with, you've put a lot of time and effort into all of this. And I would imagine that from your perspective, you feel a sense of kind of ownership over this as any of us would. Um, acknowledging that, I would say at this point, there are five perspectives that need to be equally weighted. And so we have your perspective here in this statement. And now I'm just gonna ask if each of the remaining board members, um, do you wanna leave it as it is? Do you wanna change it in some way? Do you wanna add, uh, something to it? So Supervisor Lutweller, you had alluded to a potential of wanting to maybe add a statement or I.
I'd just say, I'm, I'm open to adding a statement based on what you were describing. I don't feel compelled to need because I don't, I didn't experience something that you're describing.
Okay. Uh, Supervisor Gogan?
I would add that, what I just said earlier, that. I would add that what I just said earlier, that there was a perception of not reporting out. Prior to myself being on the board in January 2021.
Okay, and Supervisor.
Are you speaking just to the single item or to the whole item?
Yeah, I'm at this point, speaking to this one, response to this one item.
Um, then I will. I will, I will agree with the way it's written right now, and I also agree that in the recommendations and the response to the recommendations, that's where we can say that we will.
Okay, so I see where you're coming from, and Supervisor Lutweller, if Supervisor Gogan and I, I agree with his statement that there was a perception of not reporting out. And is that something that you would like to see added in, or you would more say, let's just leave this and deal with specifics as we move forward?
I, I get, I'm really in the position of saying I'm more open to, there's something that the two of you think should be there based on your experience. So if you think that we should acknowledge a public perception and a commitment to moving forward, fine, if you want to hold that to later, fine. I'm, I understand where Supervisor Fraser is coming from, and I understand what you're describing to me as something that you might feel compelled to call out, and I'll support that if that's what you want to do.
Um, I would like to include a statement that acknowledges a perception, and Supervisor Gogan. Okay. So.
I, I still have, I'm, I'm going to make one more statement here. I have an issue with a finding of perception. These are findings of fact, so unless you can say this is a fact, I have a difficult time with it. If we were down here in recommendations and responses, that's different. You can use perceptions there, but these are findings of fact.
Okay, so it is a fact that I sat in multiple board meetings and observed my governing body unwilling. To report out when directly asked to do so by as much as the local newspaper, asking for what law requires that they do.
Okay, that, I can understand that's a fact, but. Do you, can you have, do you have knowledge that they had anything to report? That's where I fall is like, the perception, yes, was that they were doing something wrong. It was not. Nothing was copacetic, but a fact. We do not have any facts of what happened on this dais because none of us were there, and that's.
So I can appreciate what you're saying, but it is, it is also possible that, um. I, to me, it was an expectation that if there was nothing to report out, then tell the public that there was nothing to report out and why. Don't just give radio silence. That is a fact that I feel, um, needs to be acknowledged. Yeah, let's do, I just want to, we need to move this forward. We've heard all of the perceptions. There's five people that get to choose collectively.
Okay, well, next question is how do you, how do you change that? Because we, you have to do that right now. You have to, uh, you have to amend my response right now. It has to be done. So you have to come up with the language that says that. You have to do it now. You have to do it on the fly, and it has to be included in this. So that, I mean, we can't just say, okay, there's a perception that there was something. There can be perceptions that there was misdoing, but if you don't like my response, you have to fix it.
Okay, we will, we will fix it. Um, so a suggestion that I would make would be to state that on one, on more than one occasion. The Board of Supervisors were asked to report out a closed session vote. And whether or not, are you getting this down? I can type faster than I can. Okay. All right. On more than one occasion, the Board of Supervisors was publicly asked to report out.
Should you put the timeframe so that?
Yes, on more than one occasion, um, following the, um. TAA settlement, 2019 TA settlement agreement. The Board of Supervisors was publicly asked to report out of closed session as to their vote regarding that. Settlement. The board did not respond. With, I would say it is acknowledged because that is my intent is simply to acknowledge what the grand jury found. Um, it is acknowledged. That the board. Did not respond with the clarity. That was requested.
Was the journal not factual? But they asked, got nothing back.
Correct.
Does that incorporate in here?
Um, I, I could incorporate that. On more than one occasion, following the Board of Supervisors was publicly asked, um, including by the Trinity Journal. To report out of closed session as to their vote regarding that settlement. It is acknowledged that the board did not respond with the clarity that was requested. Is that satisfying? Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you still disagree partially, or do you agree? With that finding?
I'm fine with everything you said.
I, I would leave it as disagree partially. I would leave the previous, the, all of the statements that you have, and I would add this statement to it for clarity.
Can you read it again?
Yes. So I'll read in instant, in its entirety, if adopted, this is what it would say, disagree partially. The current board has no knowledge of decisions or actions taken in closed session prior to January of 2021. So can.
You can't have both. You can't have no knowledge and still say that you have knowledge.
We have no knowledge as public citizens because we were not offered even a piece of knowledge.
But can we, can we make a statement as a board from what we, from where we set as citizenry? I don't.
Let's.
It seems like it's cross pollinating on our.
I, I.
Okay.
You know what I mean? It's, it's difficult to say you have no knowledge, but then to say that there's a perception. This.
This is not a perception, Supervisor Fraser. This is, um, it's on record. You can go back and watch those meetings.
Okay, but I'm, I'm fine with that, but you can't leave in there that we, we can't. It says, my answer was, we can't answer that because we weren't privy to what was happening in closed session. So. You can't leave that in there that we can't answer because we don't know what happened in closed session and say that we think that there was something bad that happened. So you're going to have to.
So I didn't, didn't say there was something bad that happened.
And I would translate this way, Dan, Supervisor Fraser, that your statement is speaking to, we don't have knowledge about decisions or actions that took place in closed session. Her comment is not saying that she knows what took place in closed session. It's that in open session, when a request was made for clarity about what happened, no answer was given. So there may or may not have been something to report on, but that the response was so either, it sounds like non-existent. But that is the problem that's being called out, not, not disagreeing with your statement. Does that, can you understand?
Yeah, I think we're spending way too much time on the findings personally.
Yeah, me too.
Uh, so basically, you could. Take it off, just end it, disagree partially, and, you know, but.
So we, we are going to move forward, and, um, unless either one of the four of you want to rescind your vote. We are adding in the sentences as I read them. If, you know, one of the four of you want to change your mind, now is your moment. Okay, moving on to finding number six. The 2016-17 grand jury also found that the Board of Supervisors failed to provide meaningful or accurate reports regarding business conducted in closed session. In particular, the 2016-17 grand jury found that the Board of Supervisors reported. That closed sessions for personnel evaluation of county council were held 11 times in the span of one year. Response, the current board has no knowledge of closed session meetings in 2016, 2017. So I, if that is the way that this statement is there, and that's the grand jury's finding, then basically, I guess we're deferring to their findings, saying that they have knowledge we don't have.
I'm just, I was saying, we have no knowledge of that, so.
I have no knowledge of that.
I don't either. Finding seven, county council advised the Board of Supervisors to reject a potential $30,000 settlement with TAA in 2021. Ultimately resulting in a court order for the county to pay TAA more than 10 times as much. In doing so, county council stifled information, casting doubt on county council's advice and assumed full responsibility for the TAA case. Response, disagree wholly. County council advised that the Board of Supervisors should not enter into a contract with TAA while they were suspended. Because I believe that should say they. Did not have legal standing. County council at no time advised that the Board of Supervisors should not enter into an agreement upon TAA curing their suspension. And repeatedly stated, it is ultimately the board's decision whether or not to settle with TAA. In regards to stifling information, casting doubt on county council's advice, there is an assumption. That special counsel would have disagreed with the advice given.
Weather needs to be correct, the. Different kind of weather. Just change that.
We're having weather right now.
Yeah.
Um, I, I do not disagree wholly with that statement, uh, with what happened during that time period. I do agree that I did hear, uh, county council say it is ultimately, ultimately the board's decision. But I also heard the county council. Encourage the board that there was, um, to act in a moment when. To my knowledge, there had been, um, information provided that that hearing would take place. And so I don't disagree wholly. I would, um, have to reread it to see if I even disagree partially. Other thoughts?
So starting at the top right there, county council advised Board of Supervisors not entering the contract with TAA while they're suspended. You know. Brings up a, a big question for me.
So without, I'm going to just, um, see if we can streamline just this. If I read the finding again without reading the response. I would like to hear your response just based on that finding. Without considering, like, don't consider the finding and the suggested response. I would like to hear your response. Could we do that? County council advised the Board of Supervisors to reject a potential $30,000 settlement with TA in 2021. Ultimately resulting in a court order for the county to pay TA more than 10 times as much, and so doing county council stifled information. Casting doubt on county council's advice. It's a weird statement. Uh, and assumed full responsibility for the TAA case.
Stifled is a strong word. Besides that, I would agree. I don't, stifled is kind of like the word we used before, you know, it's. One thing at a hundred could be a game changer. So I, I think stifled, with that word being thrown out, I think. All right, yeah, I agree. Well, I, I would say, sorry, I would say that if we were advised to accept the $30,000 settlement, and I was in on that. We didn't, and I don't remember going against their, their wishes.
Um, one suggestion that we could do, since everything in this finding is contained in a public record. Um, we could simply, um, refer to that. Is that what you would like to do? Supervisor Carpenter Harris, is that what you would like to do?
I don't know. I'd like to hear what Dan has to say.
I watched the video, that segment of video about 15 times, and everything that is in my response is factual. County council never advised us not to take that agreement. County council advised us not to settle with someone who was not a legal entity at that time. County council never advised us that we shouldn't settle once they were cured. And we, that question was brought up, it's like, hey, when they get this figured out, it was even brought up by me. When they get this lined out, can we then re-enter negotiations? And council said, yeah, we can do that. But the issue was, she would not give us advice to enter into a contract with it, entity that didn't exist. So that, um, my response to that was. Accurate, and, um. Whether it's disagreeing partially or wholly, I mean, there's, I guess you could agree with. The fact that we ended up having to pay more in the future. That's the only part I agreed with, but it was so tied in with the rest. That's why I said I disagreed wholly is because what was stated in this finding was. Not accurate, and I have an issue with that.
So I too re-watched the meeting, and you did, uh, bring up those points. But besides what you are bringing up at this moment, there were other pieces of that conversation that also led to the determination. Or the, as to how we moved forward that day. And there were other possibilities that were, uh, shut down and not allowed to be said in that meeting. And so I am more comfortable saying disagree for me. I'm more comfortable saying disagree partially. Um, and deferring, uh, to the April 6th meeting. Rather than trying to sum up everything that happened, because I think that in summing it up, there is, um, conjecture. As to exactly, um, the nuances of how that did go versus how it could have gone.
A question for you, Chair, are you, so if you were looking at the existing response, you would change disagree wholly to disagree partially. Would you include some or all of the rest of his stuff and add the part about defer to the public record? Or, or is there some part of his, rest of his response that you would remove?
Um, what I think is missing here is that county council had knowledge that that issue would be cleaned up. And Supervisor Fraser even asked in that day, and to me, the, the proper response of guidance would have been to give it the couple of weeks. Which in essence really only needed a day. It is ironic that it was actually cured that day. And that could have changed the whole course of events. And so I'm not comfortable, uh, just looking as though there's no responsibility to be taken there. Um, I think there is responsibility to be taken, and I wish to acknowledge. Um, I think there is responsibility to be taken, and I wish to acknowledge, acknowledge what, what they're stating. So to your question specifically, um, uh, county council at no time advised that the board should not enter into an agreement upon T A curing their suspension. I, that is not my recollection. I do recall a, a repeated statement of ultimately, it's the board's decision. But that statement was on the heels of a strong encouragement and also repetition that today uh, they don't appear to be an entity, um, which actually ended up being not true. So for me, I would remove um, I would say ultimate, um, I would get rid of all the rest of that. I would probably keep the first sentence and refer to the, um, public record. Which isn't a formal public record, we've been through that. Our videotapes are not our legal backup document. Um, they are there as a reference, I mean, but they're not our I'm not how you state that, they're not our legal, um, document of record. So to know that those were, are forever in perpetuity going to be available for viewing, um, I don't think is necessarily a, a true statement. Um, I would, I would take that first sentence, and then I would finish it with the, um, there was a statement of it's ultimately the board's decision, and I would get rid of the rest if it were at me.
So can you read it the way you would like it to?
Um, I would say that I disagree partially. County council advised that the board of supervisors should not enter into a contract with T A while they were suspended because they did not have legal standing. But did advise that it is ultimately the board's decision.
And so what part of that do you agree with of the finding number seven?
County council advised board to reject. I agree with all of it, except, um, I do agree with supervisor Gogan, I feel like the word stifled is awfully strong. I would say that, um, other information was highlighted with uh, more strongly than was, was highlighted more so to, um, just consider that you couldn't enter into an agreement with them, rather than, you know, in time, this could be cured, there's a potential, maybe you should just wait. I don't feel that both of those options were presented with equal weight for board consideration.
But the finding reads stifled, so.
And the finding also says that
And so that's my reason for disagree partially.
Okay.
And I could add a statement in there for me, that I feel that the word stifled is too strong.
So you agree, the county council advised the, or county council advised the board of supervisors to reject a potential three, thirty thousand dollars settlement. You agree with that?
I do.
But at the same time, we can have the video that tells, I, I've, I've watched the video and watched the video and watched the video, and never once did council say to reject the settlement. Council said, you're on shaky legal ground if you enter into a contract with an entity that doesn't exist. So that's not exactly the same as saying you shouldn't enter into this settlement agreement. And there were other conversations leading up to this in closed session that I'm not going to divulge right now, because we can't do that. But we never were advised not to settle this. We were advised not to enter into an agreement with an entity that didn't exist. So, yes, I disagree that we were advised to reject the settlement. We weren't. We were advised not to enter into a contract with them at that time. So, I mean, whether to me, language matters. This language is incorrect. If they would have said council advised the board to, or put too much weight on the fact that T A was not legally recognized at this time, or what, maybe we do something different. But council never advised us to reject the settlement. That is incorrect. I, I, there's no way you can find that that is correct, because it's not. So, um, it just doesn't work. You can't say that we were advised to reject that when, without showing how. And yes, we did ultimately pay more. That's the only part of it that I don't agree with, but it's tied into because council told us to reject it, which council told us not to sign an agreement with them at that time. County council stifled, stifled information, casting doubt on councils. Okay, I'd have less issue with stifle as a word, because council did say, okay, special counsel's not gonna I have more problem with the, them assuming that our special counsel was gonna say, no, you better sign it right now. I mean, how can we know that count, that our special counsel is going to disagree with council when they never made a statement? That is an assumption. It's not a fact.
That's an issue right there. I mean, you're bringing up a whole nother point. And again, I'm not exactly sure. Getting bogged down in this is starting to become really problematic, because we have things that we really need. I think that if we were to take this finding, we could take, again, the wording of it. I could rewrite that finding in a way that I agreed with, I'm not gonna do it in a moment.
Well, we, we can't rewrite their finding. We can only rewrite.
So I'm gonna ask you to defer till I'm finished with my sentence. Um, in fact, we're gonna take a ten minute break. We'll come back at two fifty-seven. Collecting a couple of thoughts, so supervisors, um, Carpenter Harris, supervisor Gogan, supervisor Luthweather, if you have something to add.
I, I think, um, what I was hearing, it sounded like there was possibly a move towards disagree partially. Uh, and I think some of it is tied down to the specific words that are being used in the finding, and so therefore it makes it tricky to come up with the right words in the response. Which is a little troubling when we realize that we're not actually required to get to this response to these findings, but that's where we're spending a, a bulk of time.
Um, we are, but I also feel like, um, we supervisor Fraser's point is well taken. This is a document that's gonna remain, and I feel like it is important, even though if we weren't required to respond to it, then no responses would have been fine. But the fact that responses were made, I do feel that they need to be thoroughly vetted by the five of us. Do you have something?
Partially disagree.
Okay, and do you wanna, um, say how you would like to word, change any of?
So in here in regards to stifling information cast in doubt, um, stifling seems to be hard, although when I look back in some of these things, and I know we can't go into it flow from closed session to open session. When I look back, I didn't watch it fifteen times like Dan, but I did watch it, and you know, he's, he's got great points of that day. But it's a, it's a flow of things that went along that obviously we can't talk about because it was closed session, but it's, it was a cycle of things that happened that perhaps things were stifled or cast with doubt. And possibly, special counsel would have disagreed with the advice given. But those are things that I saw in two different ways during the sessions that we had up to this date right here.
So try this, your mic, is that what you're saying? Uh, try this on for size, if we said, um, it's not working at all. Oh, you just need to utilize it. Um, I would try this one on for size. County council advised that the board of supervisors could not do business with T A until their legal status as an entity, um, while their legal status as an entity was interrupted. That is true. The county council failed to equally weight the option to move forward with the decision that day, or to give the matter a number of days or weeks to see if more options were available.
Yeah, it, yes, but it's, it's hard for me to think of this as that day. There was so much lead up to it, and
So we have to just look at the finding here.
Got it.
And so what I'm trying to do is see what they've said in their statement that I partially disagree with. Council advised the board to reject a potential settlement. I never heard, um, I never heard advisement to reject the settlement. What I heard was an unequal weight.
Okay, so my question is, not what you disagree with in their statement. If you're going to partially agree, can you point to a sentence in their finding number seven that you agree with?
But I'm not saying I partially agree. I'm saying I disagree.
You're partially disagree, which, in order to partially disagree, you would have to partially agree. So can you point to what you agree with?
I would say, um, I agree that there was information that was stifled. I would say there was doubt cast on, um, I I don't like this sentence, casting doubt on county council's advice.
That's because they're assuming that our special counsel would have given legal advice in an open meeting that would have cast doubt on the advice we were getting.
Counsel mentioned here whatsoever.
What would the stif, what would the, would county council have been stifling that would have cast doubt on the opinion other than the question you raised to our special counsel that said, when you were asking him for advice?
Right, but you also, I very much agree that words matter, and the words of special counsel are not in here. This is why I'm struggling with this, because I think it's a very poorly written sentence.
It was a very, very poorly written grand jury report. But if you I'm, the, just going from that day, from watching that video, or from reading, from being there, what could you, I mean, what else could you take from that?
Actually, I'm now reading it differently, I, I give, I can say I agree with this. Um, because if information was stifled, when I asked to have information be spoken, that was stifled. And that does cast doubt on then the advice that is being given. Now, to say that then that causes county council to assume full responsibility for the case, um, that, that is not true, so I would disagree with that.
So you agree with the statement that county council stifled the information that would have cast doubt on council's opinion?
Correct.
In order to agree with that, you have to assume that our special counsel was going to disagree with council in open session and cast doubt on the opinion?
I, you can't, I don't think you can go there, because special counsel was not brought into this statement. We can't put words in their mouth.
Well, there's no other what else was there that was stifled?
So I think what, what I want to do is come up with a statement, if I'm gonna say that I partially disagree, that I'm going to suggest a statement that I would put as the response, and you can take pieces of it or not, as a suggestion. Um, I already read it, you can decide how you feel about that. County council advised that the board of supervisors could not do business with T A while their legal status as an entity was interrupted. The county council failed to equally weight the option, equally weight the option to move forward with the decision that day, or give the matter a number of days or weeks to see if more information were available. And to me, that's the information that was stifled. So that's the statement that I would agree with, whereas I partially disagree with what is listed in this finding. That's my opinion, that's one person's opinion, and I'm gonna move on. Supervisor Gogan?
I'll make that two persons' opinion, and I don't think county council's advice led them to assume full responsibility for T A case.
So, um, add that. Not agreed. Okay, I would agree with that. Supervisor Carpenter Harris, what would you like to see done with this item?
Well, I'm sitting here trying to think of the right word. Feel like there was probably, um, the word nudging keeps coming to mind, you know, there was a nudging. But outside of that, I I have to defer to the, to those of you that were directly engaged.
Would you like me to add your statement? You're nudging to my statement, okay?
May I, uh, may I add something to the board? The word that was used stifling is an emotionally charged word. I would advise against using that word at all.
That's the word they use to us, though, correct?
And that's what, we're, our objective is not to change their finding in order to make it correct. Our objective is, do we agree what they said with what they said in their finding? And I do not. If you try to wordsmith that last one to make it say, well, okay, maybe the their finding was that county council advised us not to enter into it, that county council stifled information, and that either you have to agree with that or wholly disagree with it. We are not here to change their finding, only they can do that. We can agree or disagree. We don't get to rewrite what they wrote. That's what I'm trying to say, is if, if you don't wholly disagree, what is it that you agree with? And you said, well, county council stifled information, but not really stifled, they only, uh, didn't give full weight to other options, then you disagree with what their finding is. We don't get to rewrite it. We get to agree or disagree.
Do we get to agree or disagree that one word may be used as an adjective? Maybe just that one word like Counsel just said, is an emotional word and maybe it should have been taken as another word or taken out and not that we can, but there's interpretations of that word. Um, and I, right when this came down, I thought stifling too much. But I understand what they're trying to get through there. And maybe because of the interpretation of stifling being many different things, it's not the right word, but I, I don't think it's not meant to be put through in that type of way. There was some nudging, whatever you want to call it, but there I think Counsel is right, that stifling could be used in different interpreted differently.
Given my response, I mean, I, I really, I, I feel strongly that findings of fact should be factual. So that's my take. And if you if you can't point to what's correct, then it's incorrect. So besides that, however you want to respond to it, I think we should try to get to the actual meat and bones of this, which is the if we're having this much difficulty on the findings, we need to get down to the recommendations as soon as possible. And frankly, I don't know, I, I've a loss of why we're going through this line by line. My thought was that when this came up, it would be somebody would make a motion if supervisors had issue with what my responses were, then we would have that discussion. I didn't have any idea that we're going to be going through this line by line.
And so that would have been your decision a few months ago, but today it's mine. And so since these items are in here, I don't want to turn in a report that we disagree with the pieces that leading up to the end of it. And so we are doing this, and we're going to try to get through this quickly. So we have heard your perspective, and now we will hear Supervisor Luke Weller's perspective.
And what I'm hearing from the two of you is that the there is some, some aspect of what you see in this finding that you agree with, even if it's not every word of any sentence, and you feel it's important in our response that we have, we, we specify what that is. Is that that's, that's the reason that it's so important to change this. I'm just trying to make
I'm not sure. Is it important to specify if we say we partially disagree with something? Is it required to say why?
No.
In a finding we don't even have to respond to, I wouldn't think we'd have to get to.
Okay, well, you did. Okay, so would we like to just leave it as partially disagree? And not state why?
You can put your statement, I don't mind your statement at all. If you want to go with that.
I will read my statement again, and then we'll have the other two supervisors decide if they would prefer to have no statement at all, leave the statement as it is, or remove it and replace it with this statement. Uh, County Council advised that the Board of Supervisors could not do business with TAA while their legal status as an entity was interrupted. County Council failed to equally weight the option to move forward with the decision that day, or to give the matter a number of days or weeks to see if more options were available. It is not agreed that County Council assumed full responsibility for the case.
So, given the conversation that we just heard, I would say change the response to partially disagree and leave it at that.
Okay. What would you like to do? Either one of you?
I'll stay with that statement and partially disagree.
Partially disagree is fine.
When we move to partially disagree, Supervisor Carpenter Harris, do you want to leave the statement as it is, remove the statement altogether, or replace the statement as read?
I'll leave it as it is.
You want to leave the statement that's written in the document as is?
Yeah, the way Dan wrote it. Ms. Dar, I'm sorry, Supervisor.
Okay, so now we need consensus because we have two people who want to leave it alone, two people who want to change it, and one person who wants to remove it altogether.
Yeah, just to clarify, my recommendation was just the response would be only partially disagree. Nothing else.
Okay.
And my reasoning is that we're getting caught up in the words, and the words will matter. So if we add more words, then they have to really matter. And we're adding to the complexity of this, and if really the the main statement is, we partially disagree, if that's the you know, the vote, then I think that's enough, and we don't get ourselves into more into the weeds if not necessary.
I could agree with that.
I'll agree with that. Okay. Done.
Sorry for making this the roughest day of your life.
It's not that.
Finding number eight, County Council has been operating under the same contract for more than seven years, whereas state government code and county policies state that the term of County Council is four years. Response disagreed partially. State code states that County Council term will be four years and until his successor is appointed. That's actually a direct quote right out of code. I agree with all of that. Supervisor Luke Weller?
I'm fine with that.
Finding number nine, the contract under which County Council currently operates consists of base fees for assisting with certain county business, but also stipulates that the County Council will bill for any litigation services at a rate of $200 per hour. This contractual structure appears to incentivize legal actions that promote litigation, or at least could discourage actions that avoid unnecessary litigation. Response partially disagree. County Council has an ethical duty to act in the best interest of the county. For me, I would leave partially disagree and remove the words. Remove the, the comment on the response. Nowhere in the finding are we talking about ethical?
No, but it's saying that the, they're un- it gives the incentive for legal actions to promote litigation, which state law requires that counsel act in the best interest of their client, which says that they cannot promote litigation that's not warranted. So that, that was my response, my reason for partially disagreeing. And there's, I that used to be a lot longer, right? That's the Reader's Digest convinced version.
Supervisor Luke Weller?
I'm fine with it as it is.
I am as well.
I'll go with it. I think incentivized is too strong of a word.
Recommendation number one. We recommend that the Board of Supervisors abide by the state and county policy regarding transparency. While the government code recognizes the need to keep certain sensitive information confidential, the Brown Act makes it clear that secrecy is not intended to be the default mode of doing public business. Likewise, we recommend invoking attorney-client privilege selectively rather than as a blanket mechanism for the Board of Supervisors and counsel to avoid accountability. Response recommendation has been implemented. The current Board of Supervisors has abided by the Brown Act concerning closed sessions. The statement direction given to staff is sufficient when the board and council are discussing ongoing litigation and do not want to make public their legal strategy. Settlements voted on by members currently serving on the board have been made in public meeting and not in closed session.
I'm fine with that.
Good.
Recommendation number two, we recommend considering establishing County Council as a full-time salaried employee of the county. Cases of litigation that arise beyond the capacity of County Council would then be managed through separate contracts with private attorneys. This business model would help to separate actions that lead to or discourage litigation from the financial reward in prosecuting litigation, thereby removing the appearance of conflict of interest. Response recommendation will not be implemented because it is not reasonable at this time. Because the job of County Council requires more than just an attorney, the county would also have to recruit and retain paralegal personnel and administrative staff. The cost for this would far exceed the average of $600,000 per fiscal year currently paid to the County Council. Supervisor Luke, what do you have to add?
Yeah, well, I, in general, I'm fine with the response. I may have worded something differently and not committed as much to exactly how it's spelled out for the reasons, but I agree that right now this is there's more advantages to disadvantages of having this be serviced in the way that it is versus dedicated staff.
I would agree. I do think the $600,000 average, you know, it would have been slow through, through the years, so so, some, some years not. But I, I think it's fine. Too much money. You need to have a firm, I think.
Yes, I agree. We have, we have such a hard time roles as it is. Having a firm is
We hire any lawyers. Somebody over here wants them.
Recommendation three, if the county determines that retaining a contractor serve as County Council is necessary, consider restructuring the contract to remove the appearance of a conflict of interest by decoupling ordinary county business from litigation. This could perhaps be done with two separate contracts with competing legal firms. Response recommendation will not be, not be implemented because it is not warranted. Because County Council cannot initiate litigation or enter into a settlement and must bring all settlement offers before the board, it is the responsibility of the board to ensure the council does not enter into avoidable litigation. Furthermore, because County Council has a fiduciary relationship with the county, they are bound by law to work in the best interest of the county. Thoughts?
Agree.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, well, my inclination is to, is to dig deeper into this and say that this is something that needs to be further considered about what the right approach is because at least I have not been a part of any discussions about what our contracts are and what they should be and everything else. So I'm, I'm more open to this as a possible outcome, but I don't feel like there's a a reason right now to commit to making a change because of these reasons. So I'm, I'm fine with stated as it is because we can always revisit this.
Okay. And recommendation four, if the county determines that County Council must be retained through a contract similar to the current contract with Prentice Long, we recommend that such contracts be valid for a limited term, such as four years, and that bids from competing legal firms be solicited at the end of each term. Response recommendation will not be implemented because it is not warranted. Because the contract with County Council allows the board to terminate the contract for many reasons or no reason, limiting the term of the contract is not necessary. The Board of Supervisors will, however, begin to administer the yearly performance evaluations that are required by the contract.
This is interesting. In my PSA two onboarding, got a great presentation by the director and executive director, and one of the things that was conveyed is that all of the services that they contract out are put through RFP every four years, all of them. Not because they think there's a problem with any of their service providers, but because that's a best practice that they implement to make sure that they're always current and aware of available resources and options and so on and so forth. So I, I do think it's appropriate for us to have defined terms, and I do think that we should have performance reviews, and I do think that we should have a best practice for RFPs that's not performance-based, it's best practice-based.
Deliverables, yes.
Dan, I'm open to your thoughts on that, since you did a lot of research on this.
Well, I didn't do as much research on the RFP side of things. I just looked at a few legal, like County Council-type contracts. I see one thing that would definitely occur if we went out RFP is we would pay a lot more money. The price of everything goes up. I mean, it's like, if you, we can go out for an RFP and get a whole bunch of proposals that are a lot higher than what we're paying now. My thought is, whatever County Council we have, and we have a contract right now, we do that performance evaluation, we do which I didn't realize was actually required in the contract, and that's not that's a requirement of the Board of Supervisors that has not been done in my term on the board. We've not fulfilled the contract, our contractual obligations. But if we're doing that performance review and if we're evaluating stuff as we go along, and we have the ultimate authority to terminate that contract at any time for no reason, why do we need to go out for RFP every four years and just create more work for everybody that isn't required? If we have an issue that we can't resolve through a performance review, okay, let's go out for RFP and plan on hiring someone else. If we're just going to go out for RFPs just so we can give our staff more stuff to do, I don't see the point. Honestly, I, I really don't. I think if you have somebody that's doing the job, you have a contract, you go with it, and we don't need to we have a the whole list of RFPs and RFQs on our website that aren't getting a whole lot of responses. So
So Dan, say we did terminate for any reason or no reason. If we didn't have anybody in the can, we'll say, or a couple firms that, you know, it'd be difficult for me to say to Prentice Long or anybody, you're done. All right, now what are you going to do? Oh, man. We'll let Liam do it. I would think we would need to have some people, at least some options. We don't want the interim to be too much time this firm leaves and this firm takes over. So I'm hesitant to, to let anybody go in Trinity County, just because we don't have the backup generally. But if we had a few reasonable candidates, say.
I'm sorry, I laughed, but I'm, uh, I just, the thought that popped into my mind when you said that is, I wonder if you would, what would happen if you ran that suggestion past your wife? You better have a few options in the background in case the first one don't work out. I mean,
Usually I just lie to her. It makes no difference.
I'm, I'm we can't guarantee that everything's going to be perfect, and if we end up having some kind of issue with County Council now in the future, whenever disrespect, I mean, it doesn't matter who we're talking about as counsel either, whether it's Prentice Long or anyone else. If we have an issue, we'll have an issue that we have to resolve at that point. If we go out for RFP and we hire someone else, we're not going to immediately go out for an RFP and have somebody in our back pocket in case they don't work out and we can have to can them. So I mean, I really I gave you my best analysis of what I thought of that recommendation and
I understand. I get what you're saying. I just it, it almost lends and not saying anything about Prentice Long, but it almost lends you to be hesitant to terminate someone for all the reasons that we have all these openings here. You know, we, we don't get applicants. We don't get qualified ac- maybe we don't even get any applicants. So you kind of, you know, always hesitate because we know we said, we generally don't pay enough, blah, 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 all the stuff we hear all the time. So it, it's almost, and I don't want to say the deck stacked towards I'm just going to say Prentice Long, I don't mean this, towards these people because it's so difficult for us to find other competent people. other competent people in this county.
And if the people that we have are doing the job, why would we go looking for someone else? I mean, that's, that's what it's like. If we have, if we hire a new, when we, when our new C O comes on in April, we're not going to put it out in RFP for C O candidates. We're not going to go, we have someone and we're going to, we're going to ride that horse as long as we're, we can, because that's, I mean, there should be, the other thing is there should be some sort of, if you take a job like that, there should be some kind of job security that as long as you're doing the job, you have the job, not that four years from now, somebody that, I mean, last year especially, how would you have liked to have been somebody who was, had worked for the county for seven or eight years and all of a sudden the county goes out for RFP and you have to prove why you should get to keep your job to a board that's made up of three people who you've never met and two people that are there from your prior, prior time. There should be some kind of job security involved with people working. And I, I don't mean that they shouldn't be, we shouldn't be able to terminate them, but there should be an expectation that as long as they're doing their job, they can continue to do their job. I have no problem with that. If I go to work for somebody, I expect to work with them until I'm finished the job or we decide mutually it's over. So I really don't see the, the benefit of going out for RFPs every four years, especially on something like this.
I will take that back. RFP is probably too strong a word. I just would like to have some knowledge of time it would take to get somebody in this position. And I know it's a tough question. It's an open-ended question in a way, but it is the limiting factor to what happens here in Trinity County is that you keep X person for longer than you'd like because you don't know what you're getting or you may not get anybody.
Important thing to look at here is process. What, what is, what is the process and what are your options? And so if you, RFP is the process if you want to see what your options are. So it's not something is too strong a word. That's just what the process is. So we've seen in other entities, in, in other portions of the governmental entity, that that's just a normal piece of the process is that every four years, this is what's done to take a look at your professional services and see what your options are. In the business sector, it's very normal. This is, this is how things are run. That was my world for many years, just knowing that over, after a certain amount of time and we knew what those windows were, you would again step up to the plate and present what you have to offer. And maybe nobody else steps up to the plate and you're uncompeted. Or maybe somebody else does. And then you hope that what you offered, you know, was, was preferable.
And may I address the word?
Please.
The idea of, of going out to explore other options, you're going to get a quote that's for today. And if something should happen to the current county council, you're going to go back to that person and it's not going to be the same number. It's going to increase. And so it is, I, I agree with the chair and I agree with Mr. Frazier, Supervisor Frazier, that it's a waste of effort. That's it.
Looking for someone new, I don't think that. I mean, personally, if I was county council and we went out for RFPs, that would be like me telling my wife, I'm going to go look for somebody to replace her before I kick her to the curb. You know what I mean? It's like, I would take it as an insult if I'd been doing a job for somebody for this long and then they say, I'm going to see what other options I got. You better hope it's a good one because I'm, I'm out of here and at that point. And that's kind of personally, that's how I feel about it. It's like, if you guys are looking for other options, you better find.
Thanks, Rick. I'm listening. A song lyric comes to mind and it says, I'd rather have nothing than a whole lot of something I don't need. And so the idea of, of, of not taking care of business because we're afraid of who might replaces, replace that person concerns me a little bit, but I also thoroughly understand the idea of just having an idea of who may be out there. I don't know that you necessarily need to go as far as an RFP, but I also think that just having a general knowledge of what's available is good. But I also, I really believe in performance evaluations and I think they're an amazing tool. And I think a lot of work can be done when you are consistent with those. And the fact that that has not been done is a little alarming. And I, and I would stand firmly on the fact that we need to enlist those annual performances and do them well. And I think that inside of those is when you will find out whether you not, whether or not you need to look or you don't. But I agree with Supervisor Frazier that if someone is doing their job, then you should trust yourself and your evaluations and trust them in their performance capacity. So I would, I would go with as it's written.
I'll just state and then I'm fine with whichever way the board decides, but my experience maybe is different just because I've been on the receiving and issuing end of RFPs for my entire career. That's just what happened. I, I had a national account of 15 people that supported a customer and they spent millions and millions and millions of dollars with us and they still, based as a fiduciary responsibility of their company, would put that out for bid on occasion. And it was not because I was not doing my job supporting them as a national account director. And I didn't take it personally. I, I just knew that was them doing their fiduciary role. And, and so, and then on the other end, I've been in the position where we were doing those same kind of RFPs for the hardware we bought, the software we bought, things like that, just to make sure that we were staying current with what were the options that were available to us. What were the best practices that were out there? And sometimes we chose to continue with who we had and sometimes we didn't. And sometimes I won those RFPs that I was on the receiving end of and sometimes I didn't. But I, I completely understand what people are saying, that we certainly have staff that is already overburdened since we're so understaffed with the requirements that we have. And I do understand that it can be taken personally. In my view, I'm not putting this forward as a, we need to do this because I'm saying if we do it, it's because it is a best practice to do. And so it would be the board just deciding it is a best practice for our responsibility to make sure we have the best option for county council. If, if that's not where the board feels, I'm, I'm coming in with a lot more corporate background than I am government background. So I'm, I'm open to other people's opinions on that. And I, I hear, I hear what you guys are saying. So.
I, I hear the, the, the tenor, the heart behind what is being said here as well. I think that for me, I lean more toward, I feel like it's my, I feel like it's part of our responsibility to the constituents to make sure that we know what our options are. And that you're not going to, you're not going to know those options unless you, unless you go find out what those options are. I think that to say that we would put that responsibility on staff isn't necessarily the case, as with the other items that we've discussed today, that responsibility can be put on one or two board members to create that. And I do see that as, as an option of just responsible management, which is a piece of, of our job.
Let's put it this way, we're up, we're put up for RFP every four years.
Yes, we are, aren't we?
And unless, unless we are, no one, we, we simply can't know. If we left ourselves in, if our positions were left in our seats until someone kicked us out, you would never know if somebody wanted to run against you and somebody else may may have qualities that exceeded what, what you were able to provide. So I, I do see it as an option. I also think that there is some value in, in supporting the request of a group of people who have looked into something and they obviously have reason for their standing. And I think that there is something, I think, important about honoring pieces of what has been requested. So I, I put that out there as well.
I just want to reiterate the fact that I, I strongly believe in the yearly performance evaluations. And I think that it's within those that we would determine a prompting to a greater investigation or research into what, what is available. And I, and I think that that's important to know what we might be missing. I think that's important, but I, I also believe that it's, it's within the, the act of doing the performance evaluations that you will, you will discover some of that.
I agree, especially with the last thing said. We didn't still, I don't know if it's in a contract that's yearly or every six months.
Yearly.
But I don't know what's in, what's in the contract if it's annual or not.
It is.
Annual, we certainly, we certainly should. Hasn't been done in my two plus years, so. Absolutely. Why not?
And that was why I added that into my response because I think that if we, if we fulfill our obligations that are in that contract, then there's no reason that we would need to go out to RFP every so many years. Because we know what's going on and we're telling council what we expect rather than never, and it actually states in the contract that we're to provide that in writing. And we have not done that. That's some, I think that's the action that should be taken is that we do what we're supposed to. And then as far as the Chair Cox, when you were talking about our responsibility to the, I'm assuming you meant the grand jury, but I have some to speak to that, but that is in discussion of the responsibilities of the grand jury. So I think we need, before I dive into that, I would want to have a motion in a second and then we can discuss the global perspective of this grand jury report.
Yeah. I think I'm kind of done. All right. So is, if there is no further discussion on recommendation four, is everyone feeling like they want to leave it how it is?
Leave how it is, right?
Yes, I'm fine. Yes.
All right. So we have been through the entire report and so I would entertain a motion. Oh, wait a minute. Oh, I already did public comment at the beginning. Okay, I'm good. All right.
Move that we approve the response as amended during our discussion. Read out every one of those changes that we made? Or do we have those recorded?
She's got them.
Captured.
Everybody good with? Okay.
I'll make a second.
Right. We have a motion and a second. We're going to approve with amendments to response number five or finding number five and finding number seven.
Right. And I would like to engage in some further discussion. Because I do appreciate the responsibility and the time that the grand jury puts in. However, I was very disappointed with this grand jury report on multiple levels. And we, it came up in the past in public comment. Back and forth between Supervisor Groves and the, the writer of the grand jury report and the chairman of the grand jury, then in the Trinity Journal, this grand jury report to me is not correct. I mean, it's, it's not well done. And it comes off more as a a hit piece and a personal attack. I mean, it actually names by name our county council in this grand jury report. Not even by the firm, but by name, it calls out Margaret Long by name in the grand jury report. It seems to me more like the grand jury was thinking that they were a criminal grand jury and they were looking for some kind of crime rather than a civil grand jury. But at the same time, I'm, it's like they're trying to play by two different sets of rules. I spent more time trying to figure out what and how to respond to this than you ever should have to. And I just, I have a problem with the whole thing. I, I really do. I struggled greatly with responding because it just, it seems like there was no, whether it was a, I mean, yes, you can take and a letter that, and look at it, it was, I can't even remember the word, the anonymous letter. So, okay. Most outfits I looked at, the grand juries say, okay, if you send us anonymous letter, we can look into that, but generally they don't because they can't follow up. All right. I don't have a problem with the fact that it's anonymous letter so much as it seems like it was pointed, like it was directed, like it was an attack rather than trying to figure out what the real underlying issues were. I would, we never got it in the back and forth here or in the grand jury report, but in the Trinity Journal, the guy who wrote it said, this is not an attack on county council. This is about the board's contract with county council. Well, they forgot to mention that until the very, very, very end in the recommendations that we change our contract. If they would have, if the grand jury report would have mentioned, hey, your contract is not good and you're not abiding by your contract, I would have had no problem with that. But to have it an attack and based on findings that weren't all factual and pointed statements rather than there was always a point like and to every statement that I had a problem with. And if it would have been, your contract is terrible, you need to revisit your contract, I have no problem with that. The biggest issue I found is that we haven't abided by the contract. That's not what the grand jury report says. And I had a really, a hard time responding when I didn't know, should I respond to what the author and the chairman of the grand jury said in open session and public comment? Should I respond to what was written in the Trinity Journal or should I respond to the actual grand jury report? And that's why I tried very hard to respond only to the words that were in this report and precisely, because that's the only way I could get that right in my mind because it's a convoluted mess and I really, really struggled with it and I hope I don't get tasked with anything anywhere near this again in my tenure. That's it.
Thank you for your effort.
Much. For the job we did. The one, one, I guess I'd add to this is seems to think that you think it was kind of a witch hunt or something like that. But there was 20 people or 19 people on, on the grand jury. And I can understand, you could talk a couple, three people and they're not liking me. But 20 people, I think it's hard to talk to 20 different people, but hey, we're going to go after Rick. So I think some people are going to go, oh, no, 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 why would you do that? I, I would take the opposite stance. If you told me, we're going after Rick, I'd say, geez, I'm going to try to look for the better things. I don't want to just hunt someone down. I would like to find the good things too. So I, I don't, I don't think it was a witch hunt.
I, I, I'm not saying it was a witch hunt. I'm saying the hardest part for me was that a lot of it was that it was directed. it was directed, it was pointed. It wasn't, I mean, you can go into a, you can go into a conversation and you can ask questions that make you, but you're not asking the question, you're trying to get your answer. And that's what this felt like to me is that it wasn't really looking for the broad picture. And if we're not really, if, and that wasn't in the report, that was only in the Trinity Journal, if we were really looking at the contract, this is this is terrible. And so, I mean, personally, I struggled with it. I just wanted to let you guys know. So.
I was just going to say, I, this could, conversation could go on, but I would love to see us come to a vote on this and move on. And perhaps what we should do is invite the right person to come present to the board about best practices for grand juries and their reports so that we are fully informed about what to expect going forward and, and put that on a future agenda. But I don't think the discussion we're having right now is going to change what we're voting on right now. And we have closed sessions still to do and 10 minutes, this room's supposed to be used for something else.
Motion made by Rick was to approve with amendments to response findings for number five and number seven. Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Hi.
Supervisor Lutwiler.
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier.
Aye.
Chairman Cox.
Thank you.
All right. So having already read the closed session items and already received public comment on them, I believe we can just move right into closed session. Am I correct? Okay. And thank you for your service. Appreciate it. All right. We will adjourn the open session portion of this meeting.